Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and call our January 20th meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. And we begin this morning with a flag salute led by our County Council Jerry Carden.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will proceed with our statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. Agendas are available on the table in the back of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. We will then proceed with our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member of the board wished to have removed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 12 on the consent agenda, the committees and commissions that we're assigned to, I have been assigned, I've been elected to the Executive Board of the Mountain County Waters Resources Agency. The committee assignment has Supervisor Montgomery as the primary and me as the alternate, and now we need to change that so I can be the primary and Supervisor Montgomery is the alternate. That's the only change I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. I don't think that requires that we remove the item for further discussion. I think we can accommodate that. Board members, any other items that need to be removed for discussion? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to have any item that is currently on our consent hour calendar removed for discussion consideration? All right, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the consent.
Second.
A motion, Holmes, second, Wygant, on consent. Roll call, please.
Holmes.
Aye.
Wygant.
Yes.
Montgomery. Euler.
Aye. Okay, we've reached the time for a public comment. This is the time when members of the public can address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, bearing in mind the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. We ask that you, as you approach, you state your name, let us know where you reside, and that you keep your comments to three minutes. And we will begin, I believe, with a member of the quote-unquote "public," Ms. Holly Heinzen.
Good morning, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, Holly Heinzen with Placer County Executive Office in Auburn. I wanted to introduce to you today Commander Ryan Stonebreaker with the Truckee CHP office. He covers three counties and will be covering the north shore of Placer County in the Truckee area.
You need to pull the mic down a little bit, Holly. There you go. There you go. That's a little better. And then he'll just have to adjust it right back up.
Let me. So with that, I'm going to let you say hello.
All right, very nice. Thank you.
That's good, that's good. Good morning, thank you for having me. It's an absolute honor to work here in North Lake Tahoe. It's been a goldmine for some time. I'm a resident here and just look forward to serving the community here. So thank you very much for having me.
That's great, thank you, and good luck in your new position. You're going to be adjusting it down a little bit, too, Ms. Waller.
Hey, quit picking on short.
I'm not picking, I'm just observing. There's a big difference.
Thank you very much. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. There was a recent Marthis Valley West presentation to Terry Davis, a member of the public, Placer County staff, and I think Jennifer Montgomery was also at that meeting. It's a new concept for the Marthis Valley West, 112 Tahoe Basin acres. The developer and county have been asked to provide copies of that presentation material. County staff response said, while county staff did attend on Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, where information was presented by East-West Partners regarding visual simulations, no hard copies and/or electronic copies of the information was provided to the county as the information you have requested was prepared by and is in possession of East-West Partners, I would recommend you contact them. I have contacted them with no response. This illustrates a disturbing lack of communication and transparency. A discussion on the rules of governing ex parte conversations with the county must begin. Michael Picker, in a recent article in the Sacramento Bee, is the new president of the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, says its best. The way I work is there, if, the way I work is that if there is a prohibition on having a conversation with somebody, I don't have it. I give all parties a fair and equal opportunity to help us set policies, and I expect the same of my fellow commissioners. We're employed, we've employed an outside expert to review and help enforce internal ex parte rules and to help us utilize best practices when it comes to communicating with all parties. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Hasty, I'm the district manager for the Tahoe Transportation District, so welcome back to Tahoe this morning. I want here to remind the board and the members of the audience that the draft environmental document is out for the SR-89 Fanny Bridge Community Revitalization Project. There are three public hearings scheduled for that environmental document. The first has already been conducted at the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission. The second will be this Friday at my board at this location, and the third will be at the TRPA Board on the 28th, I believe, at the Chateau in Inklai. So we look forward to bringing that project forward. The public comment period, last thing I'd like to leave you with closes on February 17th, so for you and everyone else, please get your comments in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this morning. Anyone else wish to address the board in the public comment?
I'm a resident in Tahoe Vista, and since the Marthis Valley West is not on the agenda, I wanted to just put a little bit of personal opinion out there, which is all that ever is anyway. But I'm really concerned about it, as are a lot of people, primarily because of the light pollution and the infringement on the basin as far as all of that other great stuff is. And I was thinking that a lot of the people who live on Beaver Street above the low-income housing that was built there, that four-story building that looks a little like a jail for the gateway, are complaining bitterly because of the light pollution that comes from down just right there on the corner, from that one little building. And so the thought of putting in probably 10 or 12 of those little buildings across the ridgeline, and no matter how carefully, with quotes around carefully, they handle the light pollution, part of the reason Tahoe's so fun, nice, pleasant, and a good place to live, not just visit, is because we can still see the sky. And I have a tendency to go to Fresno and Stockton a lot, and, you know, their nighttime looks like their daytime. And they have no dark. And you never really can tell what time of day it is by looking outside. It's part of the reason most of us live here. So I really want you guys to seriously consider what a bad, bad idea. Except for maybe your bottom line, but other people will take care of the bottom line. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to address the board in the public comment? Sir, are you coming forward? Is there anybody else after this gentleman that wants to address the board in the public comment? All right, seeing nobody else, we'll cut it off after this gentleman.
Thank you very much. My name is Park Bechtel, and I'm a longtime Tahoe City resident, and I represent Burton Olaz and Elgaris on the lot at 2980 North Lake Boulevard, which is under the community plan update. And it's my understanding that we're having a little difficulty now with TRPA and you guys, you know, putting it in under the multi-use instead of single-family, which is on the highway and Ben Car lot and everything else. And I just didn't want to move forward on this community plan if we're, until we get a chance to start fighting. We thought it was, I've been to a lot of the community plan meetings, and everybody seemed to be in agreement, and now it seems to be under scrutiny for some reason. So I just wanted to make it known, and I'd like to be informed if something is going to be going further down the road on this plan. Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and move on with our agenda. We do have a timed item at 9:10. This is a commendation honoring Bob Scoville. Supervisor Montgomery was hoping to be able to make this presentation, at least read this part. That's not going to happen for that reason. So I will go ahead and read it, and then Supervisor Montgomery will present it. This is a commendation, of course, dated this date. Whereas Bob Scoville moved to Tahoe City in 1960 to become a wholesale distributor with Standard Oil Products, and Bob established ByState Petroleum in 1971, where he remained vice president until his retirement in 1994. Bob joined the fire volunteers shortly after his arrival in Tahoe City and showed dedication to wait the standard year that it took to be accepted, exemplifying to his community his determination, patience, and perseverance that the, that as a potential volunteer, he would not flee when the snow began to fly and the temperatures dropped. And Bob was involved in the consolidation of the Tahoe City Fire Protection District into the North Tahoe Fire Protection District in 1993, a forward-looking action that helped mold the district into the modern entity it is now, serving both residents and visitors with fire suppression and prevention, public education, advanced life support, ambulance and emergency medical service, hazardous material mitigation, and rescue service. And Bob was a member of the Tahoe City Rotary since 1960, was past president and recipient of the Paul Harris Fellow Award, an international award that the Rotary Foundation's way of expressing its appreciation to select Rotarians for their substantial contribution to the Foundation's humanitarian and educational programs. Bob also served on the Tahoe City Cemetery District since 1980, providing compassionate service and dignified final resting places. And Bob Scofield, excuse me, Scoville, was an officer of the Tahoe City Recreation Association for 40 years, an organization that continues to provide year-round activities, helping to promote participants' health and well-being, which is, which by extension adds to the worldwide reputation and perception of Lake Tahoe area as a year-round place for healthy recreation. And during his time with the Recreation Association, donations of more than $300,000 were given for youth activities and scholarships, an example of his continual dedication to bettering future generations of his beloved community. And of course, Bob made Tahoe City his home and strived to make it a better place to live and raise his two sons. And now therefore let it be known that the Board of Supervisors of County of Placer would like to recognize Bob Scoville's accomplishments and contributions to Placer County and express their appreciation for his dedication to making his community a better place to live, work, and play. He will be missed. Jennifer, if you would please make the presentation.
Thank you, thank you. And I've got the county cold, so I'm not going to say too much, but John Scoville is here today to receive this on behalf of his dad, and thank you to everyone who showed up to honor Bob. He was such an important part of the community, and just, he will absolutely be missed.
Yeah, go ahead and step back to the podium there, sir, and make a couple of comments, if you would please. Or ma'am.
And I'm actually an honorary Scoville. My name is Judy Friedman, and we do have one, two, three, three generations of Scovilles here today to accept this award, and I want to thank the honorable supervisors for doing, recognizing a man who is so important to our community. There's a Jewish tradition of lighting a candle to commemorate the passing of a person, and I asked the rabbi once, why don't we do birthdays like the rest of the world? And he said, because you evaluate a life upon a passing. And Bob served this community well into his 90s, and we are most grateful, and we're going to reap those benefits for a long, long time. So thank you so much.
And anybody else have anything else to add? Okay. Thank you very much for being here this morning. We will move to our second timed item, 9:15 item. This is Facility Services item, Community Develop Resource Agency. This is Parks and Grounds, imposition of assessment for services to Olympic Estates subdivision through Zone of Benefit creation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Andy Fisher with Placer with the Parks Department. We have, this is the first of a two-part item before you this morning that includes imposition of an assessment and adoption of final map for the Olympic Estates subdivision in Squaw Valley. This first request before you is to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution imposing an assessment on the Olympic Estates subdivision through County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 162. Zone 162 provides funding for the maintenance and operation of Squaw Valley Community Park as well as the Class 1 bike path that runs through the area. The zone was created in the year 2000 by your board, and assessments so far, participating assessments are made by the Squaw Valley Villages Phase 1 and 2, as well as the Squaw Creek Phase 2. Olympic Estates will add 16 parcels, for a total of 306 participating residential parcels in that zone. This action's a little bit different than some of the recent assessment district actions that have come to your board, in that when this district was created, it took in the entire general plan area for Squaw Valley. So Olympic Estates is already within the zone. It does not require an annexation, as some of the more recent actions have. It only requires a vote for the assessment. Conditions of approval for Olympic Estates, prior to the final map recordation, required that that subdivision participate in funding for local recreation services, and the owners intend to fulfill that through this requirement by participation in Zone 162. And as such, the owner of record has signed and submitted a ballot and waiver of noticing requirements. Along with that, an engineer's report has been prepared, it's included in your packet, calculating the annual assessment of $25.22 per year per parcel. That is also the same rate for the existing participants in that zone and will not change for the participants, doesn't do anything to change the existing ones. Also specifies how an annual cost of living adjustment is made in that zone. Finally, our observant County Council's office did note that in the staff report, there were three errors in three places. Zone 162 was erroneously referred to by the wrong number. So those corrections have been given to the clerk, they have now been included in your package. They are not in the items you will be making actions on today, just the staff report, but those are corrected for future reference into the staff report. So with that, to accomplish this, we recommend that your board take the actions as described.
Thank you. Any questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Andy, Andy, just for the record, can you clarify when this subdivision was approved?
When it was approved?
The subdivision itself? I believe it was 2007?
It has been a while.
Okay, just because this may not be on people's radar, and so I think it's just important to note that this is something that was approved eight years ago, almost at this point, but this is an action subsequent to approval.
Correct.
Okay, other questions by board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to address the board, pardon me, in regard to the establishment of the Zone of Benefit 162, County Service Area 28? And seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing. At this time, I will ask if the clerk has had a chance to tabulate the ballots?
Um, yes.
There's one property owner with one affirmative vote.
Okay. Ballot's been tabulated, public hearing has been conducted. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution imposing the annual assessment?
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Wygant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to item 2A, or 2B, excuse me.
Good morning. Wesley Amsperry, Engineering and Surveying. This item is the final map and subdivision improvements for Olympic Estates. This is a 16-lot residential subdivision located on the east end of Squaw Valley. Consists of 16 residential lots and two open space lots. The streets within this subdivision are private, and maintenance will be provided by the Homeowners Association. The subdivision improvements are complete, and the developer has provided security that will cover the warranty period for the public improvements. With your approval of the charge within Zone of Benefit 162, all of the, or all of the conditions of approval have been met for this subdivision. So at this time, we request that you accept the subdivision improvements as complete and approve the recordation of the final map and the subdivision improvement agreement.
Okay, questions by board members? Seeing none, any members of the public have any questions? Our board is being asked to accept the improvements as complete, authorize the chair to sign the final map for Olympic Estates and approve the recordation of the final map, and authorize the chair to sign subdivision improvement agreements, approve the recordation of subdivision improvement agreements. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Wygant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and move to item three. Three, it's Administrative Services Procurement.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board. Jerry Gammas, your Director of Administrative Services. With me is Brett Woods, our Purchasing Manager, and also in the audience, I have Lori Walsh, our Director of Personnel, and Kathy Buchanan, our Deputy Director of Information Technology. The item being presented today is requesting your board's approval of the award of request number 10395 to NTT Data, Inc., for professional services related to the upgrade of the county's PeopleSoft payroll and personnel management system and implementation of a new e-performance module in the amount of $766,752 funded by the fiscal year 2014-15 Countywide Systems Fund, with no new net county cost. In addition, approval to execute a purchase order with DLT Solutions for the acquisition of Oracle's PeopleSoft e-performance licensing in the amount of $150,379, also funded by the Countywide Systems Fund, and authorization for the purchasing manager to execute the resulting purchasing documents upon County Council on Risk Management Review is also being requested. The PeopleSoft payroll and personnel system, also known as ACORN, serves as a system of record for all transactions for human resources, benefits, time and labor, payroll, and training activities for the county. And with, and as with any other information technology solution that we support, it requires continuous hardware and software updates to ensure the county's information technology investments remain current with vendor support agreements and the county's IT strategic plan, which was adopted by your board in November 2011. Many, many of the updates are minor in nature and are included in our basic maintenance agreements with Oracle. However, periodically Oracle will provide larger updates that are outside of our scope of work and require, and are a little bit more complex in nature, and require outside technical resource assistance from vendors who perform these types of upgrades on a regular basis. This upgrade being requested today falls under this criteria. This upgrade will also provide a platform for implementing a new feature, for implementing new features and functionalities, including tax updates, interface enhancements, and improved management tools. One such tool is Oracle's e-performance module, a self-service evaluation management application for managers' employees. The e-performance module is significant in terms of employee engagement as it provides a highly proactive, consistent, and automated approach to developing and performing employee evaluations, subsequently eliminating two disparate employee evaluation systems currently utilized by Placer County. Utilizing a single system will assist the county in standardizing on enterprise employee performance platform, simplifying training and its utilization throughout the county. I'd like to turn the mic over to Brett here in a second just to talk about it's, how we went, our approach for procuring this solution.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Euler. To upgrade the county's PeopleSoft and payroll system, the department requested the assistance of the procurement division in requesting an RFP. We developed that RFP and sent it out to, sent notices out to 105 firms, 58 different firms accessed the documents and reviewed them, and we received 10 formal proposals. An evaluation panel composed of representatives from the Admin Services Department, the Auditor and Controller's Office, County Executive Office, Health and Human Services, Facility Services, Personnel, and the Sheriff's Office reviewed the proposals in accordance with the evaluation criteria in the RFP. Based on the evaluation of those proposals, the panel determined that four firms best met the county's requirements and were recommended for interviews. Those firms included Cherry Road of Morris Plains, New Jersey, ERP Analysts of Dublin, Ohio, GNC Consulting of Frankfurt, Illinois, and NTT Data of Boston, Massachusetts. Following an extensive interview process, the most qualified firm identified was NTT Data, Inc., and staff has negotiated a mutually agreeable contract that supports our objectives for meeting the RFP requirements. Also, in order to implement the Oracle e-performance module, software licensing is required. The department requested pricing from DLT Solutions and Oracle value-added reseller. DLT Solutions provided a quote based on an existing GSA contract pricing. In accordance with the purchasing policy manual, a purchase made against another public agency's competitively awarded contract is exempt from further, from the normal competitive bidding process, and DLT Solutions' GSA contract pricing meets this criteria. Therefore, in order to proceed with these two actions being requested today in the total amount of $917,131 and to authorize the purchasing manager to sign the resulting purchasing documents upon County Council on Risk Management Review, your board's approval is required. Thank you, we appreciate your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Board members have any questions? Any questions by board members? Any members of the public have any questions on this item? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on this procurement request? Motion, Holmes, second, Wygant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Go ahead and move on to item number four. This is SEDRA item, Tahoe Basin Area Plan Update Status Report. Crystal's going to talk to us about what's going on in the basin here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services Division, and here today to provide a report to your board on the status of the area plan. So just walk you through real quick on the background. We do continue to coordinate with TRPA on the update to ensure that the plan conforms to the regional planning code. As reported to your board, in October, we did release a notice of preparation for the environmental document that was released last summer. However, after release of that, there were some concerns raised by the TRPA board and staff about the area plan, particularly to the, related to the format of the document, as well as the release date of the public review draft area plan. So it was agreed upon after that first release of the NOP that we would kind of reformat the area plan and then work on a re-release of an NOP after release of the draft, the public review draft area plan. So we continue to work to address TRPA concerns and really to explore adjustments to the area plan based upon the concerns that were raised by the TRPA board. So as reported to the board in October, we, TRPA had identified a kind of modified format to the area plan, which really was to consolidate the documents that we were preparing. So we've been looking to identify solutions to that, to how to kind of reformat that document, and really achieve TRPA regional plan goals and ultimately threshold, environmental threshold gain. And so to that end, it was brought to our attention that the document as currently prepared wasn't on a path that was likely to achieve TRPA adoption. And so having had some discussions with the TRPA executive team, the county has recently contracted with Stockholm Consulting to assist in the coordination of the area plan and really to help facilitate the area plan through the TRPA adoption process. So Arlo Stockholm, who's here today in the audience, and will get up and speak in just a few minutes, but he had formerly worked with the TRPA and really led the TRPA regional plan successfully to adoption in 2012. So it was based on Arlo's expertise with the regional planning code, along with his established relationships with TRPA staff, TRPA executive team, and the TRPA board. The county felt that it would be beneficial to bring Arlo on board to assist in really facilitating the area plan through, through the TRPA process. really facilitating the area plan through, through the TRPA process. So a primary, a primary point that Mr. Stockholm has brought up is that really the area plan needs to be an environmental improvement plan. So whereas all of our other community plans and area plans in the basin have been focused more on land use plan, it has been recommended that this plan really focus on the environmental enhancement strategy that the area plan would contain in order to, and land use would be a key tool to, to really achieve environmental threshold gain. So staff and the consultant are currently working to outline a strategy moving forward. I think it's important to note that the intent of the area plan is to be reflective of the input of the plan teams that we've had over the last two years and really to maintain that community vision while also better demonstrating how the document meets the TRPA requirements for achieving environmental gains. So really, the area plan needs to better demonstrate how it achieves this, the threshold gain. And so we're working with a consultant on developing an environmental enhancement strategy. And, and the strategy really is to emphasize and highlight the county's millions of dollars' worth of investments in the environmental improvement projects that we've had up here in the basin, including more recently, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Plan is a good example of that. We also are looking at ways to identify additional opportunities for improvements and inconsistent with the team's visioning. So as an example of that, in the Kings Beach area, the Kings Beach team had looked at a potential for a boardwalk along the beach areas in Kings Beach, and so we are looking at, that, that was already included in the document, but we're looking at how to highlight that as a, a project that really helps to achieve environmental threshold gain. Just to give you kind of a further example of that, what we're doing currently is to prepare additional maps that really focus on the town centers. To date, in, in our plans, we had mapped out the environmental improvement plans and projects, but they were really on the, the whole, you know, county. It was a view of the, the entire plan area in the county. And so now what we're doing is focusing on the town centers and really looking to demonstrate existing and planned water quality improvements, existing and planned transportation infrastructure improvements, and also recreation infrastructure and improvements. And then by doing that, by, by really kind of focusing in on the town centers, we're looking to see whether or not there's some missing links where we could have opportunity for additional environmental projects that would help to achieve threshold gain. So another piece or component to the area plan is the parking management plan. So this was, this is a effort that is being coordinated by the Department of Public Works and Planning. We're preparing a parking management plan to really look for area-wide solutions to address parking in the basin. It includes recommend, recommendations for new parking standards, so those parking ratios related to use as well as parking design. The intent is for the new parking standards to be folded into the area plan. There is an administrative draft out right now that we're currently reviewing, and we anticipate a public review draft of that document in February. And then with respect to the environmental document and the plan preparation, the EIR EIS consultant right now is cur, or excuse me, contract is currently on hold pending release of the draft area plan. We do expect that draft area plan in spring. When, and then after that release of the draft area plan, we will re-release an NOP for preparation of the environmental document. And then for public outreach and next, next steps, we will be re-engaging our plan teams to really discuss the adjustments and this new approach to the area plan and really to seek input and support from the team to, to ensure that this new approach really aligns with the community visioning that, that those teams had done for the last couple of years. We plan to resubmit the area plan to TRPA for a second review, that's anticipated in late February. And then a public review draft area plan again is expected in the spring, and we will have that out for a sixty-day public comment period. The NOP again will be re-released upon release of that area plan. And then during that time, during the comment period, it will be presented to the TRPA APC, the RPIC for meetings for them to review that, that area plan. And then also, we will be conducting scoping meetings and public workshops during, during that time. So in terms of how this impacts the schedule, it does push out the schedule a little bit. We anticipate a draft EIR EIS and again, a draft plan to come out towards the end of this year and planning commission deliberations to begin at that time. And then we, we expect that we will be before your board for deliberations in early two thousand and sixteen with a submittal to TRPA thereafter and a potential TRPA adoption in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, and I'd also like to introduce Arlo Stockholm. He's in the back of the room here, and he is happy to come up and speak to this new approach, if you'd like to hear a little bit about that.
Okay, let me just check first, see if there are any questions by board members. This time Jennifer.
I just wanted to confirm, Crystal, that the, the team, the plan teams that have been engaged in this process, their work to date is going to still be included in whatever we bring forward, and they will continue to be part of the process moving forward?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't see any other questions, so if you want to add a few comments, go right on ahead.
Good morning, board members. Arlo Stockholm with Stockholm Consulting. I don't have a lot to add to Crystal's presentation, I think it was pretty thorough. I've been engaged to help work through the headwinds that this plan has encountered as expeditiously as possible and basically align the community vision and the county goals with the regional plan and its requirements. Crystal pretty thoroughly outlined some of the environmental challenges and the environmental requirements to get approval. And kind of the second piece that maybe wasn't emphasized quite as much is also aligning the regulatory provisions to the requirements and allowances under the regional plan. The end result under the regional plan are significant new redevelopment incentives targeted primarily at the town centers. So that was the biggest change in the two thousand and twelve update is frankly relaxing some of the development standards within town centers subject to a suite of requirements dealing with environmental improvement. And the whole intent of that is to leverage private investment to complement all the public investments that have been made over the years. But the private investment really hasn't been seen to the extent that I, I don't think anyone in the region would like. So we're working collaboratively with your staff, with TRPA. We're doing a little internal brainstorming, I guess you'd say, and then intend to go back out to the community and coordinate with them on, on some of these ideas. And that's about all I have. I'm here to answer any questions you may have or get any input. I'd also note that Lucia Maloney with TRPA was kind enough to drive up for this meeting. So if you have some input you'd like TRPA to hear directly, they're here as well. Any questions, I'd be happy to cover them.
Thank you Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you very much, Arlo, for coming today, and Crystal, thank you for, for all your work bringing us to this point. Earlier under public comment, Arlo, I'm not sure if you were here at the time, Mr. Beck told raised the concern about wanting to do something that's mixed use. From, from your perspective, is bringing the regional plan update forward, is, is that something that we can have an expectation that will, will fall on fertile ground? Taking that forward to the TRPA within the town centers?
Within the town centers, mixed use is encouraged and promoted and should not be a problem. Outside the town centers, rezonings from residential to commercial or mixed use can be more problematic and more difficult to achieve. So it's gonna, I'm actually not entirely confident of which property he's talking about. But that's the general guideline, is the, the new upzonings, if you will, are primarily targeted at town centers. And intensifications or those types of things outside the town centers are generally discouraged by the regional plan, and there'll be a significantly higher kind of burden of proof to, to move any of those forward. Not to say it can't be done or shouldn't be done. I know the Truckee River Corridor has some problematic zoning and it has for years, but the, they'll, they'll have to be additional justification and analysis in the environmental documents. Whereas the changes in the town centers were largely reviewed and approved by TRPA and Placer County's environmental documents can tear off those, and it's a much lesser standard of, of proof, I guess.
Okay, and then to follow up on that same general topic, the new uses or expansion of uses under the TRPA regional plan update are intended to be focused either within or immediately adjacent to town centers. Am I correct in thinking that?
In general, yes. It's a long, complex document. One change outside of the centers that I'd note in the regional plan is commercial areas are encouraged to also develop with residential uses, more of a mixed use development pattern as opposed to commercial here and residential there. There are a couple revisions as well, outside centers, dealing with reforming coverage requirements, for instance. Those have been largely implemented through the regional plan already. The difference within town centers is the redevelopment incentives don't become effective until an area plan is approved by a local government and found in conformance with the regional plan. So for people to really invest in the town centers in Tahoe under the new regional plan allowances, an area plan for those town centers is required.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Crystal.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask if any members of the public have any comments on the update or any questions for the board?
Good morning. Good morning, Ellie Waller, a member of the North Tahoe West team. I've been before this board, before the TRPA, before the NITRAC, before the Planning Commission on several occasions. The teams were never recipients, beneficiaries of their work before it's been made a public product. Our names are on this, our faces are on this, our communities came to us as representatives, and I think it only fair that the teams see the documentation before it's released to the general public. I don't know how many times I have to urge that, I, I think it's the right thing to do. We spent over two years of our time, we have never seen the work product that was asked of us. And so I'm encouraging this board and the staff to sit down and revisit the schedule and allow the teams the product before it goes out. There's, there's items that were never clarified or completely agreed to, and I know we can't agree on everything. The county will bring forward a process, we've been asked to participate in that process, but I would also like to believe that it meant something. And then there's a little bit of confusion about one area plan versus four ordinances. That really needs to be better described to the general public as well as the teams. I think the town centers are very different, and one product or one document to cover town centers and one document that covers the west shore versus Tahoe Vista, Carnelian Bay. We made progress toward standards that are different, and we're not cookie cutter. And I think we should be allowed, again, to see those documents and, and have individual area plans. Maybe we need four area plans instead of just an environmental improvement project. Thank you.
Good morning, Samir Tuma with Keela Tahoe. I want to talk a little bit about timing. In October of two thousand and thirteen, we sat down with Placer County and discussed the timing of getting this area plan through TRPA conformance. And we were told at that time that the plan was to be done by January of two thousand and fifteen. That's this month. Later, in April of fourteen, they were before you, and this plan was spring of fifteen. In October, this past October, the plan was fall of two thousand and fifteen. Today, the plan is spring or summer of two thousand and sixteen. So in fifteen months' time, schedule slipped eighteen months. That doesn't bode very well for completion of a plan. Now, I've been around this game long enough to know that these things take time. Things come up, there's reworks, it's a multi-jurisdictional process. I get all of that. But one of the, and, and when TRPA was going through this process for the RPU, they had a similar sort of problem, and it kept slipping, kept slipping, kept slipping. About six months ago, had a meeting with Supervisor Montgomery, and her thought at that time was, well, maybe we ought to do what the TRPA did, which was pick a date and make it happen. They chose twelve, 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 and they did what it took to get that through the process. Okay, and the, the, these things can keep going on and on and on. The down, there's several downsides to keep going on and on and on. One is it costs the county a whole lot more money because you keep having to hire more people, that time is money, time just goes by, and, and it, it costs a ton of money. The other thing is the impact on the ability to get to the environmental improvements and get to the economic vitality that everybody's seeking. So I think I would implore you as a board and staff to, to think about coming up with a date and sticking to it. Now, twelve, twelve, twelve was kind of cute, it worked real well. I would propose six plus ten equals sixteen. So you got June tenth of sixteen. But pick a date, whatever that date may happen to be, and then make it happen. Because these things will go on and on and on, and the downside to them keep going on and on and on is significant. We're going to get through another cycle here of the economy. Things aren't, people aren't going to, aren't going to build in the down economy, and you're going to have gone through this process and really not get much out of it. So I, I, I recognize that it's a very, very difficult process, but I think one tool that can be used that's proven to be successful is a date that's immovable. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name's Jesse Patterson, I'm the Deputy Director for the League to Save Lake Tahoe. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I just wanted to say that our staff has been involved in the area planning process for quite a long time now, as long as a lot of your staff and TRPA staff. We are encouraged to see this new approach led up by Arlo. It should be an environmental improvement plan, but it is land use, and land use is a key component of that, as you probably all know. This particular area plan has the largest land area under, being managed by an area plan. So it has a potential to be very impactful at helping the TRPA regional plan update achieve its goals. So it's essential that it's done right and done well, and does achieve that. A couple of things that we think would be very essential to achieving those goals is ensuring that you have targets for coverage reduction as well as a stream environmental zone restoration. Those two components really lead to improvements and the goals set forth in the regional plan update. There's a very good opportunity here to do something really, really good for Tahoe and to set a good example for everyone else working on these area plans to prove that this approach can work for Tahoe and can work for achieving environmental gain and economic growth in the area. So our staff is available to work on this project as long as it takes to get done. I do encourage you to set a date and, and get it done. You don't get any of those benefits unless it actually goes into place. We're available to answer questions for you, and we'll continue to work with Placer County staff as well as TRPA staff and Arlo to get this project done. So thank you for your time today and for listening to the presentation.
Thank you.
And I do have a question before you go away, so please don't leave the podium yet, and I apologize if I cough in the middle of it. When you talk about coverage reduction, are you talking about in-stream environmental zones specifically or just generally?
In general, but it would be prudent to focus on stream environmental zones. You get more incentives, development incentives, redevelopment incentives if you do that, and there's greater environmental improvement if you focus on those areas. So we would definitely encourage you to look at those and try and target those areas.
Okay, and then in terms of setting a date, TRPA did set the date of twelve, twelve. Based on the direction that you see Placer County moving now and the plan teams working with the county and with Arlo, would you think that our next year, January, board meeting here in Tahoe, what would be January of two thousand and sixteen, would be an appropriate date to set for that, that process?
It seems reasonable today. You have to play out the process to see how it goes, but I think that is a good target. This should be a community-driven planning project, so having the planning teams involved is essential. So as long as you're getting their input and addressing those issues, I think that's a very reasonable target date.
Okay, so I would just, I would just ask the board that we look at bringing this item back for board deliberations on the final documents in January of two thousand and sixteen at our Tahoe board meeting. Thank you, appreciate you being here today.
Other members of the public wish to address the board on this item. Okay, Crystal, what, can you describe some of the things? Because last year we sat here and we were looking at board adoption, hopefully this summer. What are some of the factors that keep knocking this thing back?
We met with, so we really got stalled out in the summer of 2014 after the NOP had been released and it was brought to our attention, two things. One was that we needed to really take a different approach to the area plan, and then also, at that time, we had, you know, we were preparing four different documents, one was a policy document, and then four implementing ordinances. Those implementing ordinances had not been released to the public prior to the NOP that was released, and so TRPA had concern about that. They wanted one big draft area plan to be released before the NOP was. At that time, though, TRPA was reviewing the administrative ordinances that we had prepared. There was a lot of comment from TRPA on those, and so we worked through the fall to address TRPA concerns and to reformat that plan. At that time, though, is when we began having some conversations with the TRPA executive team about the approach and what could potentially assist us moving forward to really achieve TRPA adoption, and that was when we decided to contract with Arlo. So having said that, since October, we've really kind of taken, you know, sat down with Arlo and really taken a look at whether or not the plan as originally prepared was on a path to TRPA adoption, and it was recommended that we really take a different approach. So that's kind of, you know, the delay really working through TRPA on what they wanted to see in the area plan and then kind of regrouping with Arlo Stockholm to identify whether or not that was going to work for us and kind of to get his recommendations on, is there anything else that we could do to ensure that we are meeting the regional plan and the code and that we can get through TRPA adoption effectively? So that really has been, it's that kind of regrouping that has, I believe, has kind of stalled us out. I will point out that bringing it to your board, you know, in the first part of 2016 is great, I think we can get there. There is additional time involved in the TRPA adoption process, so I think, you know, it's likely to take three or four months to get through the adoption process at TRPA as well, so which would really bring us into a summer 2016 date.
All right. Seeing no additional questions from members of the public and no additional comments from board members, we'll go ahead and wrap this. Yes, go ahead, hop on up here.
I kind of, I have been staying out of this particular issue just because I get way too emotional and you guys get tired of listening to me. However, after listening here and something else that I read, the, I'm wondering if it's not a really good idea to look at this since it sounds like you're in the process of redeveloping what you developed that wasn't working very well. I kind of like the idea of, sorry, it adds more work, individualizing some of this plan, because we're talking about two-thirds, no, a half of the basin, the watershed, and a town center. But the reality is, like Ellie said, there's probably four or five town centers, and none of them match, and they're not going to match. And no matter what you do with it, it's not going to look like Hera's Below Heavenly on South Shore, thank God. So I like this idea of making smaller pieces, because it sounds like you're trying to eat the elephant in one big piece instead of, you know, a spoonful at a time, and that might be why you keep getting bogged down in the process, is because it's just a little too grandiose, and the parts don't fit. So I just wanted to encourage you to look at that, and I just, I'm sorry that a developer decided to scold the Board of Supervisors, because I know you guys are doing the best you can under the circumstances that you have to deal with, and I always worry about stuff like that, because it always makes me think, they're trying to get away with something, or they're trying to stretch something, or they're trying to stretch something. So, yeah, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Seeing no other public comments, no other comments from board members, we can go ahead and move on from this item. Thank you very much, Crystal, for the update. And we'll move to item 5A. This is Health and Human Services, Animal Services, discussing lease and operating agreement with the Town of Truckee for an animal shelter services. Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Wesley Nix, here Director of Environmental Health, Animal Services, and the Laboratory. I realize, of course, this is not Kings Beach, this is Grand Lebakan, so I apologize for the first slide off the bat there. As you know, we are required to provide animal control services by state law to our contract cities and unincorporated areas of Placer County. This has been a very long and important core responsibility of HHS. These services include rabies control, quarantine of animals involved in bite incidents, investigation of animals that are potentially dangerous to the public, investigation into animal cruelty cases, and of course, the sheltering and adoption services for stray and unwanted animals. And to that end, the Board of Supervisors in Placer County has made a huge commitment to improve that in Placer County recently. We're, Western County is going to build a brand-new shelter, and so we recently have started looking at ways to improve the eastern Placer County Sheltering and Animal Services as well. So the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter, we looked at some of the current challenges and how to improve that, and came up with some ideas, kind of brainstorm how we could possibly improve sheltering services and animal services in eastern Placer County, and we're fortunate to have an opportunity for a regional shelter agreement with the Town of Truckee that we'll explore in more detail. So our current shelter in Tahoe Vista is over 42 years old, it's approaching its operational lifespan. It serves eastern Placer County all the way from Immigrant Gap to the state line, so a pretty big area of responsibility. Opened in 1972, capacity for only 12 dogs and 10 cats maximum, which has been a bit of a challenge in the summer months during some of the beach patrol, partially because some of the animals that stay at the shelter stay there for quite some time. It's cinder block construction, very similar to the one in Auburn, may have been built about the same time from the same contractor. About 1,500 square feet is the entire square footage of the structure. Well, it handles about 100 animals per year. That's actually been a downward trend. It's been about 130 animals about three years ago, and we're actually estimating only about 90 animals handled this year. We're doing a pretty good job, of course, with the help of our volunteers, which do amazing job, and our fantastic county staff with what we've got to work with there. And the cost to shelter each animal is about $340, which is a little high, also partially due to the length of stay some of the animals have there. Some of the other challenges we've added are porous walls and floors are becoming very difficult to clean, kind of creates a persistent odor problem we're having trouble getting rid of, increases the likelihood possibly of disease transmission. Some of the paint is chipping all the way back to the original cinder block, making kind of uneven surfaces. We have inadequate direct sunlight. It's recommended to have modern shelters to have as much direct sunlight as possible for the health and well-being of the animals, and we have no outdoor dog run accessibility. Instead, we have a small outdoor animal play area. It's kind of difficult to use in the winter, we have to shovel the snow up over the fence, it's fairly labor-intensive for the staff and the volunteers, and it provides no shade in the summer. We have to kind of stretch some tarps across the fence line there. And then some of the waste management cleanup, we just kind of hose that area off into the soil, which I'd have to put my environmental hat back on and write myself a ticket for that, I guess. The average length of stay is something we'd really like to see improved, over four months for dogs and eight months for cats. This can increase the difficulty in placing animals for adoption, some of them don't handle that well. You can see the kennels are rather open and across from each other, so the dogs can have a tendency to antagonize each other, it's very noisy in there. And the cat adoption area is fairly cramped, that's the photo on the right, the slide showing the, kind of the cat condos there, very cramped area. The structure's not really that inviting for families or groups, that's the front lobby there. The counter is pretty much the entire lobby, so really only one person can be at the shelter for any business they may need to conduct at any one given time. I was there over Christmas delivering some cookies, and there was someone who found a poodle, a stray poodle, so they were bringing it in, looked like it was very well-kept, so we assumed the owner would be there pretty soon to redeem it. And a volunteer came in with another pit bull, and they got kind of tangled up in the front counter, just two people had a kind of a traffic jam there. So it's large groups visiting have trouble with the space, the staff are back there and behind there in the cubicles, and the kennel attendant is right there at the front counter. The kennel attendant, if they're out, have to close when the officers are in the field since we don't have any real depth of staff, or we can't open it just with volunteers on site. And there's only one restroom for employees and the public, which is kind of, also our gun locker is actually in there, and our controlled substance locker, which, you know, we keep it locked up, we keep it safe, but I just don't think it's ideal having a gun locker in a public restroom. Very limited storage for supplies and equipment, very limited office space, that top photos, where we prep all the food bowls and everything, kind of have to bend over there, very cramped. The laundry room there also doubles as an isolation room, a vaccination room, and sometimes as another kennel when we get overcrowded, since that's the only other room we have. And the structure really does not meet current standards for animal care and sheltering as recommended by the Humane Society of the United States. So we looked at solutions to all these issues. Upgrading the existing shelter was the first thing we considered, we talked to facilities a little bit about that. That cinder block construction's not really conducive for add-on rooms or adding another wall. Once you start taking bricks out of it, you kind of weaken the entire structure. They recommended just replacing it would probably be a better option. So we'd have to have a much larger structure in order to meet the standards for improved animal sheltering and the goals we're after. Expanding the footprint would exceed the TRPA parcel coverage limitations, and it may require a new, larger parcel in a different location if we built it with all of the features that we need. Cost estimates for that are about $5.7 million for a new shelter with the expanded capacity and improved services. And the third option became available is form a contractual agreement with the Town of Truckee as a regional shelter. We're fortunate that the town went ahead and built a shelter that opened in 2013 September. That's 10,000 square feet, it has enough capacity to handle all of the animals for eastern Placer County for more than the next 30 years. It's a state-of-the-art design, it includes an in-house surgery room, shelters approximately 605 animals per year now, and can certainly handle the 90 to 100 animals that we would add to that load. Average length of stay, this is a huge improvement, it's only 17 days for dogs and 38 days for cats. The adoption rates have increased by 150% since they opened the new shelter, and that is just very attractive to our goals of improving animal services. $250 per animal fee coupled with less operating costs results in approximately $100,000 annual savings if we entered into an agreement with the town, which would equate to about $2,250,000 over the life of the 30-year agreement. It also removes the need to build a new facility, so it could save $5.7 million in out-years if we did go ahead and try to build a new one. The cost to Placer County is $750,000, it's a one-time capital contribution, which is paid back within the first eight years of the agreement by realizing the annual $100,000 operating costs, so the fiscal consideration is definitely a benefit to Placer County. Some of the features that are attractive and meet the goals that we'd like to achieve, the front entrance, the design allows for plenty of natural light, community room on that one end of the building is a fairly large community room, which would expand our capabilities for outreach and training, volunteer coordinator meetings, field trips, you name it. The outside play area is covered, heated, and accessible all year round, and does have proper drainage. The lobby and reception area, obviously much more conducive for larger groups to visit, and there's personnel available at all times, so the shelter never closes when the officers are out in the field and the kennel attendants may be away for whatever reason. And there's a lot of opportunities for volunteers in the community. Supervisors, about 80 Placer County residents already volunteering at the shelter, and about 150 donors participated into its construction. The kennel hallways is designed with modern design in mind, it reduces noise, helps with disease control. You can see the doors are, you know, solid full doors, and the glass is only halfway down, so the animals don't antagonize each other by barking and across and control noise in the hallways. The inside of the kennel, you can see an outdoor dog run is available to each animal. And the cat adoption area, that's a large glass window that's visible from the lobby, so anyone who comes in can look in and see the, all the cats. You can, it's kind of hard to see, there's several cats, and they're hanging out, they're actually watching TV. There's a squirrel running around on the screen, they'll run up and attack the screen once in a while, so they seem pretty happy. I think when you adopt them out of there, they might actually be sad for a little bit. The surgery room that I mentioned before is another savings to Placer County in that part of the $250 per animal fee that the town will be charging includes span neutering services, which would eliminate the need for us to have outside veterinary contracts. And the shelter parking, obviously they can handle larger crowds, plenty ample parking for visitors. So the location is on Stevens Lane, just off Highway 267 and I-80, fairly easily accessible. It's actually closer to the residents of Immigrant Gap, Kingvale, Soto Springs, Serene Lakes, Norden, Bartis, North Star, Alpine Meadows, and Olympic Valley. It's only seven miles farther from Tahoe City, and it's 13 miles away from Tahoe Vista. So the location is fairly well-acceptable and easy to access. Another benefit is one shelter location, if all of the animals in the area are picked up and they go to one shelter, there's no guessing as to where the animal ended up. So if we enter to a 30-year contract agreement with the town, the animal control officers will provide the same service covering the same eastern Placer County areas. The response times will be essentially the same, because they'll be in the field responding from one call to the next, as they are now, in the same operating patrol areas. We're actually going to add another officer three days a week in the Tahoe region that's budgeted now, so response times will actually improve in the near future. Lost and found animals can be seen online through the Town of Truckee Shelter software, which we'll be using the same type of software, so they should, that's coincidental, a lot of agencies are going to the same software system. And we're implementing a free-ride home program for any licensed Placer County animals who have been lost or found. If somebody has transportation problems, say they're in Dehoma or something, can't quite get there, we will work it, it might take a day or so to work it into the route, but we will replace or return the animal to the person's home. As I said, the same software system for both the town and Placer County is already in the works. They said they would provide a kiosk, the town did, in the lobby for animal sheltering licensing, and the officers will have the ability in the field to issue licenses. Those are all improvements in the near future that we are going to implement. So the action before you this morning is essentially to enter into a 30-year long-term agreement with the town to resolve all of our sheltering challenges in eastern Placer County, and I would be, of course, available to answer any questions you might have.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Wes, thank you. The $5.7 million figure that you had up on the screen, does that include land, or is that structure and physical improvements only?
That was just for a new structure on the same location. If a new parcel would be, had to be added, that would be an additional cost, yes.
Okay. So I just was thinking about the comment earlier from the gentleman from the TRPA that they're looking to reduce coverage in the basin rather than increase that. I don't have, the way this works for people who haven't been to a board meeting before is we start with substantive questions, which is how much, how tall, how big, how wide, then it goes to the audience, and then it comes back to us. I don't, one of the questions that I did want to ask is, I didn't see it in your slides, but there has been raised the concern that while this would be closer to a substantial amount of eastern Placer County population, because this is an eastern Placer, it is a regional facility, not a community facility, that the, sorry, that the bulk of the animals are actually picked up within the Tahoe Basin. Can you address that?
I haven't confirmed those numbers, but intuitively it would make sense that most of them currently are picked up within the Tahoe Basin, but most of those animals are not adopted out back to the Tahoe Basin. So again, having them in a facility that had more traffic, more, a higher adoption rate, faster adoption rate, would be an improvement to the health and care of those animals, finding a permanent home more quickly would be the goal.
And... And related to that question, what percentage roughly, I'm not asking for to the, to the individual percentage point, but roughly how many of the animals that are picked up are reclaimed by owners rather than adopted out to somebody new?
I would have to defer to, about 75% are redeemed back to the owners.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just had some question about staffing. You don't anticipate, if we make this move, you don't anticipate hiring extra animal control officers?
No, we, we don't supervisor homes. We were planning to hire another officer anyway that's already budgeted to form, kind of do a supervisory role, a field supervisor, if you will, to increase and enhance services in the area. But we were going to do that anyway regardless of this move, so no additional staff will be added.
And will the animal control officers that work for Placer County, will they be housed, stationed at the Tahoe Truckee Tahoe, or the, I'm sorry, the Truckee Animal Shelter?
They will have an officer, so whenever they deliver animals, drop them off, they'll be able to access phone calls, computer services, and respond to complaints. Most of the time they'll be in the Tahoe area responding to calls, so most of their time is, is in the field.
So if someone, if someone needs the services of an animal control officer, they would call the Truckee Shelter and then they would dispatch that to whoever was in the area?
They could call the Truckee Shelter or they can call the main line like they do now. It'll be dispatched by radio from our Auburn central dispatcher. So really that's not going to change that service, should be seamless to the public.
Okay, thank you.
You had, Wesley, you had a statistic up on the board that indicated that we were talking about one, approximately 100 animals per year at this facility. Is that total intake?
That's correct. That's total, that's been down for the last three years. It's gone from about 130 to, we're actually estimating about 90 this year.
So that's cats and dogs?
Correct.
That's those that are reclaimed, those that are adopted out?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm sure that it might be a little busier during the summer than it is in the winter. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, it's just an assumption on my part, but we're talking an average of one animal every three days?
That's correct. About that, that's, yeah, it is more busy in the summer, but that is correct.
So when we talk about having our animal control officers available to respond to calls, it's not like they're being overwhelmed if we're talking about 90 total animals in the course of a year?
Well, a lot of the calls aren't necessarily bringing an animal to the shelter. They resolve a lot of them in the field, their complaints, noise complaints, leash law violations, beach patrol.
I get that, but in terms of animals actually utilizing the shelter?
Right. That's correct.
And of those that are reclaimed, you said it's about 75%, so we're looking at about 70 of the 90 get sent back home. What is that turnaround time typically, do we know?
Before an animal's redeemed from the shelter?
Yeah.
Again, I'd have to refer to Mr. Winters.
Do we have an average of what it typically works out?
Yeah, it's about three days. Normally dogs more than cats. Cats have less of a return.
Okay. Okay. I, thank you, that's all I got.
Sure.
I don't see any other questions by any members of the board, so at this time we'll go ahead and open it up to members of the public who wish to address the board on this item. Understand that we're going to ask you to please identify yourself and also try to keep your comments to three minutes because my sense is there are a number of people that want to talk on the side.
Good morning. I'm Linda Slack Cruz. I'm a Tahoe Vista resident. Today I am representing over 1,200 community members and 95 businesses. I just received another 100 signatures this morning as well. I will keep it as close to three minutes as possible. Most of us found out about the potential agreement between Placer County and the Town of Truckee for Animal Services through one of our local newspapers on November, in November of 2014. Placer County Director of Environmental Health, Public Health, and Animal Services started this process two years ago. Direction was given to find a viable solution for the aging Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter. Beginning December 2nd, 2014, we asked that this process be slowed down, allow for community participation. We spoke at each of the local advisory councils, the direct, to the director and to the district supervisor, and voiced our questions and concerns and asked each time to be invited into the process. Here are some of the facts and reasons we believe the process needs further analysis and public participation. 69% of Eastern Placer County would be closer to the Truckee Shelter than the one in Tahoe Vista. This is population, not animals. Over a five-year period, 94% of the animals served were, were inside the Tahoe Basin. Of that, the bulk were within a four-mile radius of the current shelter. 6% of the animals served were in the Truckee Basin and I-80 corridor. Over a one-year period, 401 animal control officers were responded to. Of that, 97% were in the Tahoe Basin, three outside. The highest rate of calls were in Tahoe City and Kings Beach. Current on-call response time is poor at best, adding additional stress to other departments. We are requesting stats from the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and State's Department. Day response times in and out of the Tahoe Basin will be affected eight months out of the year due to summer and winter tourism, weather, and road construction. This will be a decrease in service. With 75% return to owners, that's a lot of free rides. We're guessing on the 75 cents, 75%, I do not have the stats with me today. The potential agreement requires a 30-year contract, a $750,000 buy-in, 250 per animal delivered, and a potential savings of $100,000 per year. So often we think we will increase service by centralizing operations, only to find that service truly deteriorates. We would hate to enter into a 30-year contract only to find that the level of service is compromised and current issues become greater concerns. At what point do we decide there is a cost to providing a better level of service and that a savings of $100,000 may not be in the best interest of the animals or this community? Supervisor Montgomery asked as we were ending our one-on-one meeting, are you asking for six months? The answer to her and to you is yes. We are respectfully asking for your consideration and slowing this process down and letting us participate, much like you did in Western Placer County. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak to each of you individually and Supervisor Montgomery for hearing our concerns, giving direction, and for stating that you believe the process should be slowed down and allow for public input, input and analysis before making a decision on our shelter. Again, I hope you feel better. In closing, we are hopeful that you will direct Placer County staff to participate with the community in an effort to find a viable solution that keeps the shelter and service within the Tahoe Basin where it is needed the most. As a side note, we are meeting with North Tahoe PUD tomorrow evening on their recommission to discuss land capabilities as they are the neighboring, or the neighbor that borders the shelter site. I thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Logan McDowell. I'm a Tahoe Vista resident and also have been a volunteer at this shelter since 1999 and have been adopted and a pet from there. Over the last couple of weeks, I have had the opportunity to see the proposal that has been presented today. I feel that the presentation is a misrepresentation of our shelter for the following reasons. Kennel harshness, which has been mentioned in previous presentations. In the last year, the Auburn Animal Shelter sent 17 dogs that were kennel stressed or had behavioral issues to Tahoe Vista as it is a less stressful environment and we have more enrichment training options. Play areas, we have two play areas for the dogs, excuse me, one in the back and one on the side that is put together with six-by-six chain link panels, creating approximately 500 square feet of play area. We have the same tarp in our backyard that Donner Truckee Vet Boarding has in their yard. The tarp has high-quality webbing that creates adequate shade. We also have a kiddie pool which the dogs can play in and cool off in hot summer days. As for winter days and shoveling, I'm sure as a community, we could locate a blower. Fecal matter, we do not hose solid fecal matter into surrounding areas. We pick up all solid material or matter and hose the concrete with simple green, non-toxic, and biodegradable. Health of the animals, sickness, one case of parvo in eight years. Sunlight, we have windows which the sun literally shines directly into. The gun safe issue, the safe in the public restroom is an easy fix. Unbolt it and move it into the back laundry room, which is an employee-only area and is marked as such. Yes, the shelter needs an upgrade, but these dogs get out of their kennel and go for walks and for surrounding the shelter daily. If there is inclement weather, they are given enrichment toys and staff volunteers play with them inside the shelter. They are also given training and behavior modifications by the kennel tech. In closing, the phrase "please don't judge a book by its cover" is very fitting. With that thought, I ask, please don't judge the health and welfare of our animals by the age of the building. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Connie Nowlin, N-O-W-L-I-N, with Wiley Animal Rescue Foundation. We also go by the acronym WARF, W-A-R-F. We have collaborated for several decades with the Tahoe Vista Shelter. In many regards, we have helped finding homes for animals. We have helped also financially supporting the shelter. We are, of course, respectfully requesting that we keep this valuable service open here in the basin. And I'm here also to read a letter on behalf of a volunteer and a professional dog trainer who has been involved with the shelter for a long time as well. It has recently come to my attention that there is a move to shut down the animal shelter in Tahoe Vista. I feel that this is such a shame in that the dogs that, that are there get an incredible amount of one-on-one attention and care, not only from the staff but from the community that seems to be incredibly involved as well. I am a canine behavior consultant slash professional dog trainer. I have worked in Truckee, the North Shore of Lake Tahoe, and in Reno for almost 16 years. I have had the privilege of being involved with the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter over the years in a variety of ways involving the training of dogs as well as training the staff and volunteers and people who have, who have adopted dogs from the shelter. In my 30-plus years of working in this field, I have been involved with a variety of shelters but have never seen such commitment and the level of care for the dogs that I have seen at this shelter. The staff there has an incredible devotion to the dogs and has made it a priority to give special attention to the pups that need, that need it the most. In the numerous times I've been at this facility, I have been struck by the number of people who like to come by and walk the dogs. And these are community members, not only the devoted volunteers who show up rain or shine or snow when we have it to take the dogs out and give them one-to-one attention. These volunteers are the same ones who asked me to teach them how to train basic cues to the dogs to make them easier to handle and to make them more adoptable. I have also been awed by the fact that this shelter has successfully placed innumerable dogs into wonderful homes. There were times I would be there one week and by the time I came back the following week, most of the previous dogs had been adopted and more new ones were there ready for their homes. In my opinion, it would be a shame to close this shelter as it is the only one in the Tahoe Basin and is such an integral part of life there for dogs who need homes as well as for the community. I hope more consideration will be given to keep that facility open. This is signed by Jeannie Collins Duffield, CPDT. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Skip Piacinski. I've been a resident in Tahoe for 30 years. Who is really responsible for the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter? Are we the people of this community accountable for the maintenance and upgrades of this shelter? No, clearly responsibility falls to the Placer County's Departments of Mental, of Public Health, Environmental Health, and Animal Services. In the county, if the county inspects this facility as they do others, they knew years ago that the Tahoe Vista Shelter needed improvements and upgrades, which they have been neglecting for years. The county is responsible to keep this facility operational. As a taxpayer, our dollars should be spent in our community, but for the last 16 years, a portion of ours taxes have been going towards the funding of a $23 million animal shelter in Auburn. Why are we not getting our portion of tax dollars to go towards the improvement and upgrades to the Tahoe Vista Shelter? The director has suggested to use the Truckee facility instead of spending the money, excuse me, on upgrading the Tahoe Vista Shelter. The director stated that by using the new facility in Truckee, that the county would give Truckee a one-time $750,000 payment. I think that the $750,000 should be redirected along with our taxes to make improvements and upgrades to the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter instead of helping to finance a shelter outside of our local area. Thank you.
My name's Kendra Aker and I work in Kings Beach. The Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter has played a very important role in our community for over 40 years. Many of us have adopted our animal family members from the shelter. It provides quite a few of us the opportunity to volunteer and donate to a cause we are passionate about, and all of us have benefited from the services it provides to local animals in need. We talk about doing what is best for the animals, which we all can agree is our highest priority. But what this proposal neglects is that it isn't the structure that determines an animal's well-being, it is the care that they receive. Our community is passionate about our animals and about our shelter. Our community has strong ties to our current shelter staff and our shelter staff actively participates in local events and really knows our community. And it is through this relationship that we are able to provide our animals with a high quality of care. And it is the shelter staff's knowledge of our community that allows them to reach out to community members to find homes that are suitable for the individual needs of each animal. If services are moved to Truckee, it is unlikely that we will be able to maintain this level of rapport with the shelter staff. We have an incredible volunteer staff that not only provides these animals with the love and care they deserve, but is also able to sustain these animals for as long as it takes to find them a forever home. The Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter's partnership with WARF has allowed for many animals to be placed in foster homes when needed and enable them to survive until they are able to be adopted. And has also made it possible for animals, such as my own dog, to receive necessary medical treatment without which they would not be eligible for adoption. Many of the volunteers I am talking about will not be willing or able to travel to Truckee to fill, to fulfill the same roles that they played at the Tahoe Vista Shelter. Transportation is an issue for many in our community and Brockway Summit can be daunting for the majority of the year due to snow and traffic. The animals that are picked up in the basin will receive a decrease in care if less community members are willing to volunteer, especially if we lose foster home services. It doesn't matter if they're in a nicer building if they aren't receiving the attention and love that they received at our current shelter. Our community is full of passionate locals who care deeply for our animals and our animal services and are asking for the opportunity to actively participate in the process of coming up with a solution to upgrade our facility instead of abandoning it. Over the past two and a half months, since the public was made aware of this proposal, many of us have organized together to increase public awareness on this matter, make our concerns known, and express our desire to be allowed the opportunity to be involved in this process. And we have done all we can with this limited amount of time that we have been given. We are asking that you do not decide the fate of our shelter today. We want to be given the time to explore our options, seek out the necessary funding, and develop an alternative proposal that makes more sense for our community. Closing our shelter and moving our services to Truckee is not our only option, it's just the easy one, and it's definitely not the best one. Our community is passionate and willing to explore other options and develop an alternative proposal, but we need to be given the time and the opportunity to do so.
My name is Sherri Sugow. I'm a resident and homeowner in the Kings Beach, Brockway area, and I've been there for over 10 years. I also am the proud owner of a 10-year-old golden retriever. I am an expert and consultant in international conservation finance, and so when I heard about this issue, obviously a lot of red flags came up for me, even though it's not in my core area of expertise. We heard a lot of compelling reasons that the Tahoe Vista Shelter should be closed and transferred, services transferred over to Truckee. However, this is, this seems to me the low-hanging fruit, and obviously the low-hanging fruit is not always the best solution. I'm obviously concerned as a homeowner that my taxpayer dollars would be transferred over to Truckee. over to Truckee for services that I believe should be maintained in our community. I'm concerned about some of the facts that we heard in the presentation today, as well as the last meeting. Many members of the community raised concerns that the presentation was not actually factually correct, that the number of animals that can be taken care of in Truckee was not accurate, and that it would not be as easy to transfer the animals over to Truckee as was presented. I think the number we heard last time was 60, and then a member of the community mentioned that the Truckee facility could only take 18 animals. I also have a hard time with the $5.7 million to rebuild a facility, which is just pure infrastructure. I would like to know what it costs to build the Truckee facility, which looks like a state-of-the-art facility. It is hard to imagine that any facility could cost $5.7 million. So I'd like to see either competing bids or what study was done to support that figure. And so when you combine these sort of factual issues with a lot of compelling reasons that we've heard from the community over and over again, I think that there should obviously be more time to develop a rational approach that meets the community's needs and desires for having its own animal shelter. And I would like to propose that during this time, that we see whether there could be some collaboration between Placer County and Washoe County to have a joint facility that serves both our area as well as Incline Village. There seems to be a real need there. And I would also like to propose that the community come together and find an NGO that can help raise the funds necessary to match any funds that Placer County would put forward. And if there was any chance of taking some of the $20 million that were going to Auburn and putting that forth, I would like to offer my time as well to help to raise those funds so we could have a real public-private partnership that meets the needs of the community, as well as, obviously, the needs of the animals. Thank you.
I just obviously sat in the wrong spot. I don't know how to plug this into the...
Mira Besser.
Get your pass out around for me. This is one of Placer County's compassionate rescues from North Lake Tahoe. She was seven months old when I got her. She'd been beaten for the best part of, not really the best part, of that short life. Because she was the procuring reason for an arrest, a felony arrest, that was not related to the dog abuse, she could not be adopted. We did not get her cleared for adoption for 18 months. I fostered her for most of that time. Well, I fostered her for all that time because I tell people, I have commitment issues and she will be a foster for life, so I'm a failed foster mom. Not the point. There are stories that are not bottom line. The bottom-line story in this case is looking a little thin. Wes, you know I love you. So there's 18 kennels in the Truckee Shelter. There are 12 kennels in Tahoe. Tahoe does not smell because of maintenance issues. Tahoe does not smell at all, unless the office lady, our wonderful Chris Viviano, is out sick and the ACOs don't have time to clean. That place never smells, and I have the world's most sensitive nose. I've been to state-of-the-art over in Washoe, brand-new, couple of years old, smells. It isn't about the building, it's about how it's cleaned. It's about how it's taken care of. Unfortunately, Skip mentioned, you know, deferred maintenance is deferred maintenance. Clean it, paint it, help us figure out other ways to do this. Your bottom line in this document is incorrect. And I've been through it, and yes, it says it's only $750 to buy in, and it's $250 a dog, and it's $2.65 a square foot. Wow, they're giving us 180 square feet. Wow, that's a lot of square foot. They're also only willing to keep the dog for five days, 10 if it's a, oh, what's that word? Quarantine, thank you. Sorry, I lost the word. They will give us one telephone. They will, it's just, it's wrong. It is not viable for the shelter. It's a little like, here, take this grenade. It can be canceled, the contract can be canceled, in 30 days without cause by the town of Truckee. And at that moment, we have to find places to put the animals. There's just, you guys are good at trusting your staff. You have wonderful staff. Love, Wes, really do. But this is a bad idea. It doesn't give you the bottom line you think you're going to get. And I need my phone back.
Hi. Good morning. My name's Michelle Okushima. I'm a business owner in Kings Beach. I own a small mom shop, Hot Diggity Dog and Cat. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Kings Beach Downtown Association today. I am the Sergeant of Arms, and I am also the committee chair for this issue. I'm speaking, well, first, I'm going to speak for the Downtown Association, and then I'm going to go rogue, so bear with me. So the Kings Beach Downtown Association is asking, which, sorry, the Kings Beach Association consists of 39 businesses and employers, and we would like to request that you slow down the process so that we have an opportunity to take a look at stats and things that have not been ventured into at this point. We are in favor of keeping our service in the basin, all services that we have presently in the basin for that matter. So I'd just like to reiterate, we'd just like maybe a six-month period of time to cooperate and look at things that have or have not been explored. Now, here's where I'm going rogue. So yesterday at the store, it was a little slow, and I got to thinking, if I were in your position and I voted to slow down the process, what is it that I'm going to learn in a six-month period of time that hasn't already been looked at? So I kind of got to thinking, and some of the things that we haven't looked at, or from what I understand, based off the slides, is the public-private option. We haven't looked at grants, possibility for a regional facility cooperating with Washoe County. We haven't looked at ballot initiatives. There's lots of things that we really haven't looked at that could potentially improve the community and keep services where they are. Now, I think you alluded to the fact that you, Ms. Montgomery, sorry, that you tried to do fundraisers in the western Placer County area for the animal shelter that was either not successful or had very little success. So to that, I'd like to tell you what our community has done in a smaller venture. The example is the Tahoe Unleashed Dog Park. We have been able to secure $284,713 for the dog park. Yes, we are quite accomplished at fundraising and securing funds. So I think a public-private option there would be a viable option, but I'd like the opportunity to take a look at it. In addition to that, we have individuals in the community that are willing to donate generous portions of money, generous sums of money, shall I say, should the facility stay in our area, in the basin. And what have we done so far in getting together and talking about the possibility of a closure? Well, what we have done is we've reached out. We've reached out and we've asked other facilities that have undergone or are going through the same thing we are right now, meaning a possible closure, and asked them for their advice. And we do have facilities that are willing to work with us. The Truckee facility, which has the potential of taking our animals and our taxpayer dollars, is willing to work with us to come to a solution or help us come to a solution by providing their research and information that they have gathered over time, as is the Rockland Community Animal Shelter, who is undergoing the process right now with their township. So in conclusion, if I'm sitting there and I decide, okay, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, so I'm going to learn these things, can we enter in a private option? Are there grants available? Is there a possibility by outreach into Washoe County for a regional facility? These are the things that I'm going to learn. So there are options that have been overlooked, options that can be vetted and can garner great community and taxpayer support. That support and help could help the county reach its financial goals. So thank you for your time, but please give us a little extra time. Thanks.
By a show of hands, can I get an idea of how many folks still want to speak on this item? All right. Go ahead.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident, member of the North Tahoe West Community Plan Team. I think we can find some coverage reduction between Carnelian Bay and Tahoe Vista if we can find the funds and the resources to do this. So coverage should not be an issue here. I'll work with TRPA personally to make sure that that isn't going to be a compelling issue. The current shelter is on 1.7 acres. It's surrounded by our public utility district land, and our public utility district people, as you've heard, have a dog park now. I'm sure they would be interested in conversations about providing additional coverage. And again, as a member of the North Tahoe West team, I will talk with my team members, and we will find coverage reduction somewhere else. Thank you.
My name is Jim Nowlin. I'm a 27-year resident of the North Tahoe area. I want to emphasize that you're putting at risk a huge, huge asset. You're seeing a bunch of them here today, but the volunteers that support this facility are huge. They're very motivated. The numbers at West came up, shows how effective they are. They're reducing the number of animals through spay neuter clinics, through foster homes, through all the things they're providing for if-cost. And, you know, the numbers of animals that this facility has been required to handle has been steadily going down. His own numbers just recently, 120, 190. But if you move this out, you put at risk this huge asset. Like I say, they're very dedicated, they live fairly close, it's part of their social makeup, and you move it over to Truckee, and I think you're going to lose a huge part of that, which is sad. The big thing I want you to consider is the time element. To rush into this arrangement, not only is it going to upset a lot of people, but I think you're going in the wrong direction. There's a lot of people that are looking into alternatives, and six months should not be an unreasonable amount of time to give us a chance and come back to you and show, well, these are what you can do. Hopefully, we'll save you a bunch of money. But the most important thing, don't lose this asset of these volunteers. Thank you.
All right, I saw a bunch of hands, so folks, you just keep coming up and maybe even line up that would help us move through this a little faster.
Hi. My name is Pam Emrick, and I'm a resident of Tahoe Vista. I just want to state that I also support the group that is requesting a delay on the decision of the animal shelter. I think giving everyone an additional amount of time to look into some of these facts and figures and data, I think that's really important. I'm concerned by some of the statements, such as no loss of service, just the drive time every day is going to be a round trip, 45 minutes a day. So where are we making up that time? Those are some of the things I'm concerned about. It's also increasing gas use by the county, vehicle miles traveled, all these things that we talk about wanting to reduce, air pollution, all of this, and we're just going to add additional miles back and forth, especially when most of the services is, it appears to be on the Tahoe Basin. So I think some additional analysis, looking at those would be very helpful. I'm also really concerned about the loss of the community and the volunteer community. Like you state, they're very supportive. They've always been a huge advocate, and I think to let them continue to do their work and look at making the shelter better is a really positive thing. And I support, I mean, we need to give the animals the best care possible, but I'm not sure that the loss of all of their people that are volunteering and walking them and their access to the regional park and the new dog park that's being built, I'm not sure that that is also in the best interest of the animals. Thank you very much for your time.
My name's Ted McDowell. I'm a resident of Tahoe Vista. I've spent some time volunteering at the shelter and adopted a rescue dog from the shelter in the past. Tell me to read a letter from Sarah Mills and just some highlights of it. We will submit the whole letter with the petitions as well. My name is Sarah Mills. I'm currently pursuing a master's degree in pet animal behavior. I'm writing my thesis of mental welfare and quality of life, and dogs reside in animal shelters for long periods of time. Placer County Animal Control in Tahoe Vista is a small facility with caring people that are capable and willing to keep dogs in their care physically healthy and mentally healthy. Please consider the people that care about this shelter, the staff and the volunteers, a little more time to come up with a negotiable, time-oriented plan. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Scott Baumgartner. I live at 7681 Aaron Avenue in Tahoe Vista. I've lived at Lake Tahoe since 1968. Placer County is required by its codes and the laws of California to provide animal services, which is considered a public service to those within its jurisdiction. Public services are seen as so important that for moral reasons, their universal provision should be guaranteed. Much like a fire station that is built in the community it serves, the station and its firefighters are there to prevent or minimize the loss of life, damage to the environment, and loss of property from the adverse effects of fire. They are ready and available to respond to one fire or many. The Sheriff's Office provides law enforcement services to our community and is ready to respond to one or many law enforcement issues that arise. Various public utilities provide water and sewer services throughout our community. These systems are built to deliver the first drop of water, the first toilet flushed, and to have the ability to serve one or many. Providing an animal shelter in the community it serves is unlikely to, I'm sorry, providing an animal shelter within the community it serves is not unlike the above services. The shelter must be available to service the first animal in need or many, and must be located in the area it serves. And in our case, the largest area of need for service just happens to be in the Tahoe Basin. Thank you.
Go ahead and close it and bring it back to the board at this time. Ms. Montgomery.
Thank you. I wanted to really let everybody have the opportunity to speak and have your say before I really weighed in on this, outside of the specific questions of detailed dollars, those sorts of things. I want to thank Scott Baumgartner for his comments, and I want to reiterate the fact that we are extremely fortunate in Placer County that we do have animal services in the region. Nevada County, in contrast, does animal services through their sheriff's department in eastern Placer County and takes all their animals down to Nevada City. So if you live in the unincorporated area of Nevada County here in the eastern edge of the state, you got to go all the way to Nevada City to reclaim your animal, which is certainly nothing any of us want to see. I also wanted to thank everyone for their comments about how passionate both staff and volunteers are. I think that's absolutely true, and no one is taking any pokes at staff and volunteers. The concern that Wes is bringing to our board today is, what do we do with an aging facility? And I don't think there's anyone who disagrees that it is an aging facility. I was hoping to get through this without coughing, but I'm not going to. We had very similar conversations in the west end of the county about how we rebuilt our facility down there. And that facility, after a great deal of discussion with this board and a great deal of what's called value engineering, which is trying to figure out how you get the best product for the least amount of money... product for the least amount of money, came in at just under $22 million for a 35,000-square-foot facility. Some of that is outdoors, some of that is indoors and conditioned. That cost, I believe, is just over $400 a square foot, somewhere over $400 a square foot. Truckee's facility, Tony, if I remember correctly, came in at just over 600? Is that right?
I think you counted.
Yeah. Okay. Somewhere around 600. So, what I'm hoping to communicate is, all of you who live here in the basin and have dealt with both the county and the TRPA know how difficult it is and how much more expensive it is to build in the basin than out of the basin. So, if we as a community take on the task of trying to fundraise for this and identify dollars, understand that that $6 million figure for about a 4,000-square-foot structure, am I right about that 4,000 square feet, Wes? Is what we need to bring it up to current code. That's probably not out of the ballpark, and it might be low. Just some background and framing. I think there is value to be had in slowing this process down, and those of you who have communicated directly with me have heard that from me, and I committed to asking my board today to defer action on this agenda item and to give Linda and the other folks who came forward and said, hey, give us six months, six months. So, what I would like to ask my board to do today, if you're willing, this is a vote, is defer any action on this item for six months, bring this back to our Tahoe Board meeting in July. I believe it's July 20th is our Tahoe Board meeting. Is that right, Annie?
Yes, July 20th and 21st.
That would be July 20th and 21st. That would be roughly six months from, that would be exactly six months from now, actually. But as part of that request to my board to not take action today and say, yes, let's give this six-month period to do some work, we would need to see substantive and substantial progress on this. We would need, Ellie, thank you for stepping forward and volunteering to look at the coverage issue. County staff, I can't ask them at this point to take on the full responsibility of managing this. I need the community who is asking for this slowdown to be part of the process, not just telling county staff what to do. So, what I would like to request from my board, I don't know, do I need to make this in a motion, Jerry, or is this would just be a request to defer for, I would move that we defer for six months any action on this item, and that would allow the community time to identify a location, coverage, necessary donors to help locate site and design an animal shelter for the eastern Placer County service area. And I would ask, as I have, that over the next six months, those members of the community who've self-identified both as potential donors and supporters, communicate regularly with county staff and keep staff updated on their progress towards planning, design, and fundraising, and that I ask this to be brought back to our Tahoe Board of Supervisors meeting in July for a decision to be made at that time.
Supervisor Wiegand, give some comments before we adjourn.
Yeah, so with the motion, if you agree, I'll second it, and then I'd like to make some comments.
So, with your request, Jennifer, to delay the process, I'm receptive to that, but I wanted to make some comments on behalf of the community because if there are three of us who are gonna point ourselves in that direction between now and July, I want to be clear about my expectations and kind of work I'd like to see come back. So, first of all, I'm in my 21st year in this job and live down the hill, so I'm not from the basin or the eastern side of the county, but I understand that my responsibility is essentially to be a council member of Tahoe Vista, if you will. I know that I'm your elected representative at a local level, so I take that job seriously. And so, there was a comment made about fair share, level of service, and in the 21 years that I've, 20 years plus the year that I'm in, as a member of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, we have long acknowledged that the eastern part of the county is different. It's a tourism-based economy. We take that notion very seriously, and the county has worked hard, I think, to make sure that the tax revenues that are from this area actually stay here and reflect the levels of service that are necessary to maximize the value as a tourism-based economy. It includes even a very high level of animal control, not to mention creation of bike trails and those kinds of things. So, it's not something that we don't talk about and think about, and hasn't been something that we take very seriously, and I just want to get that out on the table. And frankly, tell you that staff has a very compelling argument as we start down this. I understand if I was a member of Tahoe Vista, you would be essentially with this recommendation from staff, losing a local amenity, but our responsibility is to look at all of the population in the eastern side that is going to be served by this facility and the cost ramifications of all of that as it relates to being able to maximize the value of all of our levels of service up here in the eastern part of the county, so I'll be focused on that. As Jennifer mentioned, we've gone through this drill as it relates to upgrading an animal facility down in my part of the county, and it took a couple of different iterations. One of the strong arguments in favor of staff's recommendation is to be able to do some joint collaborative work with another local government. And our work down below actually emphasized that in the beginning, and one of the participants unfortunately changed their mind and decided to do something on their own. So, if you're in my business, anytime local governments can work together in partnerships, oftentimes the outcome is extraordinarily much better than otherwise. So, I'm happy to look at these arguments more thoroughly. I'd like the community to drill through some of the numbers that Wes presented, and I'm happy to have those conversations, and I'll make myself available to talk with you, but I wanted to be really clear as to my expectations as to the information that I'd like to come back if I'm gonna opt to do something different than what's been proposed by staff today.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I hate to do this to you, Holly, but could you come forward? I have some clarification about the financing of the animal shelter in North Auburn. It's my understanding that it's been financed over the last 15 years from capital facilities fees that have been collected over those years, which is more than $8 million. We've also collected more than $8 million from the casino for payment in lieu of taxes that went towards that, and in the good years, we put extra money, around $5 million, into our capital facilities fund when we had extra money in the good years. Is that a...
Supervisor Holmes, those are approximate, and yes, we have made contributions through our taxes in lieu for capital facilities. We have had a longstanding component for animal control and facilities in our capital facilities fee, which has contributed substantially to that, as well as a general fund contribution that is actually a lower share than those other sources.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that was clear to the public.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I'm not, yeah. We're in a new economic society. State and federal government, from Congress to the governor on down, are looking to local jurisdictions to collaborate and to make wise decisions from the local level because state and federal funding is no longer there. This is an opportunity for us to collaborate with a neighboring jurisdiction. We already collaborate with Health and Human Services. We collaborate with our sheriff's departments, with the jail, I understand. We collaborate, the Tahoe Truckee Airport has been a big partner with us when we did the Waddle Ranch project. I don't see any problem with us moving forward with this today. I think that's the trend in government nowadays. We have to find opportunities. This is an excellent opportunity to move forward, to provide good services over the long term for not only the residents, but the final analysis for our animals. And so, it would be my recommendation to move forward with this staff recommendation at this time. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Last question. Do we have any reason to believe that in six months, the same offer that's on the table today is gonna still be on the table?
Excuse me, would the contract change in six months? I don't know. The town of Truckee's been very collaborative and cooperative with it. I could assume it would be similar, but of course, it would be probably open for negotiations again in a six-month period of time. The other negative impact would be we would not realize some of the savings that I discussed in operational savings, so it'd be about a $50,000 loss by waiting six months of operational savings.
I, we've seen this movie before over on the west side. It was almost a 20-year movie, and it didn't end really well. And Supervisor Wiegand alluded to the fact that it involved partners from time to time and then didn't, and there is just no easy solution to the animal control needs. It's very expensive, it's very high maintenance, and it always involves emotions. And, you know, some of what I'm hearing today about you're moving it out of our community, moving it 13 miles away, it's as far as 40 miles from parts of my district to our animal control facility on our side of the hill. And yet, I have people in my district who drive the 30 to 40 miles to the facility to help out with the animals because that's their passion. It's not the location of the facility necessarily, it's what they want to do. And so, whether it's 13 miles away or three miles away, I'm not really understanding the whole notion that somebody who has a passion for this wouldn't volunteer in a facility that's 13 miles away. But more importantly, I'm curious as to what we think a six-month delay is going to do in terms of presenting solutions that are not in front of us today. We have a facility that I haven't heard anybody say is a suitable facility and just needs some new paint. We need a new facility. The facility that we have today is deficient in a number of areas. It's certainly not very hospitable for the animals or for the public in general. And so, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure what we think is going to materialize in six months, but I will defer to supervisor whose district is most directly impacted by this and acquiesce to the consent for the six months, but rest assured, if we're back here in July and there hasn't been some significant progress toward a solution that allows us to keep a facility with a higher level of care for the animals and a cost savings to the county, then I think it's incumbent upon this board to make a decision that we otherwise might have been inclined to make today. So, with that, we'll go ahead. We have a motion on the floor by Montgomery, seconded by Wiegand, to table this item for six months. Take it up again at our July meeting. We'll call the roll, please.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Hi. Okay, we'll see you in six months. Yeah, we're gonna take a very quick break. We'll be back here by this clock at 10 minutes after 11:00.
I know. I have no idea why.
Just a green one.
All right, get up, cut the cough.
I'd call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We have a number of items still left to take up. We will begin with the homework works item, the rebranding of the Tahoe area regional transits. Will, how are you today?
Good morning. Thank you very much, Will Garner. How did it work? Good job.
If I could ask folks to keep the sidebars down a little bit, please. We need to be able to be heard up here or have our staff be heard. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Will.
Yes, so this morning, we're going to be asking you to do, take two actions, recommending. One is to approve the new TART brand for the TART service to be implemented into all of the TART service in general, and then to approve the paint design for the TART buses specifically. So basically, the Board of Supervisors authorized $100,000 in TOT funds to undertake a rebranding of the TART service for this fiscal year. And that started back in the summertime with a committee that was formed. The county executive office hired a consultant, Fallon Multimedia, who is here today and will help us with the presentation of the branding. But I did want to take one moment to mention the committee that was involved in this and the participants. So we had Sandy Evans Hall and Ron Trebus from the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. We had Jamie Wright from the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, Kelly Beatty from the town of Truckee, Gordon Shaw, sitting as a representative of the TMA, Kent Hoopinggarner of JMA, Melody Rebick from Truckee Chamber, Dave Paulson from North Star, Mark Brown from the town of Truckee, and Jennifer Merchant and myself from the county. From the Resort Triangle Transit Coalition, which we were here about a year ago discussing, which is a group of stakeholders, agencies, entities that are very interested in improving transit service here in North Tahoe and the Truckee area, we held three transit summits. And the most recent one was in November. And a year ago, November, in our second summit, we came out of that realizing that there's a lot of work to do, you know, to pull off the whole vision of the transit service is going to be expensive and take time, but there are some, what we were calling low-hanging fruit items, that we wanted to start making progress on. And one of them was to develop this unified branding. And the unified part of it is key in that we were coordinating with the town of Truckee with their transit service and our transit service called TART to coordinate or to come up with one single unified brand that made the services look the same. They would still be run by the town and by the county, but to the public, it can be confusing that there are multiple transit services and different phone numbers and different color buses. And so that's, this is an attempt to make this more understandable to the public. And so that was the effort we started to undertake this summer. And what I'm going to do here is maybe ask for the next slide. Do I have control of that? Here it is. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, so one thing we have in the town of Truckee where we also have a bus stop is two bus stop signs and two phone numbers and two different looks. And so that was, you know, one thing we want to correct is this multiple imagery of our transit service brand. And just for reference, this is what we have today. This is the TART bus. We've had this look for 20-some-odd years, and so this is what we're starting with. And so what I'll do is I'm going to go ahead and introduce Shelley Fallon from Fallon Multimedia. She's going to step through the branding process and take a look at some of the more attractive-looking imagery on the screen and go through that and discuss that with us. And I'll bring it back to me.
Okay, so we were tasked with the new brand look and feel, and we met with a committee to discuss the current status of the transit system and whether or not even to keep the name TART. And so we did informal market research on that and pulled people in Truckee and North Lake Tahoe, visitors, residents, business owners alike. And it was overwhelming. Yes, we keep the name TART. It's recognizable. We need to keep that in our community. So from there, we met and went through all kinds of brainstorming sessions, and we decided that we were going to come up with some brand pillars to create a nice base for the new transit system logo. And the brand pillars are convenient, sustainable, environmentally friendly, reliable, accountable, easy to use, frequent, on-time, fun, and polished and recognizable. One of the other very important things that we all came, that came across in our brainstorming meetings were that we wanted this logo to look like a transit logo, not a lodging logo, not a spa logo, you know, with birds flying and everything else. We wanted a transit logo with an element that represented Lake Tahoe, North Lake Tahoe and Truckee as well. So, do you have control? This was the logo that we came up with for the Tahoe-Truckee area regional transit. Now, this logo can actually be broken up into sections where we could just be using the T eventually, once it becomes branded in the community. From that, we have been working on some bus designs that would be, there it is, using the components of the logo and the colors of the logo and making use of the brand. And from that graphic design, we also went to a very early conceptual design of what it could look like if we actually ended up wrapping the buses in the future with promotional taglines, things like, you know, "Ride the Bus, It's Good for Us," or whatever we end up doing visually and for the community, for tourism messages or stewardship messages.
Okay. Don't remember if there's anymore. So in December, your board approved a order of buses, a contract to order buses over the next five years, including new buses for TART. The initial order is going to be four buses for the TART system. And one of the next things we have to do with our manufacturer, Gillig, is to give them a design as to what the exterior of a bus is going to look like. And so from what we're asking for today, one of the actions is to approve these designs. And specifically, I wanted to note that there's two different ones here. And what this represents really is a range, but generally, the design is going to be, is incorporate this branding, the logo, the look of the swoosh on the, which is part of the logo itself, and then the colors, blue and green. And so that's a deviation from our old red, white, and blue buses that we've had. When we give them to the manufacturer, there's going to be some detailing that's going to take it, you know, slightly different from this. So that will be based on our interaction with the manufacturer. The wrap is an idea that our group discussed as an item that would be sort of on top of the branding and then also be part of a promotion of North Lake Tahoe-Truckee that we would incorporate and be part of. And that would be a feature that we would add on top of the bus, and they would represent maybe different imagery of North Lake Tahoe and Truckee, and maybe the buses would all have different imagery. And there'd be a tagline that would be part of the promotional, the promotion that happens. That would come back to the board as a separate and additional item. So anyway, the... So basically, yeah, we're down to the two actions, which are, one, to approve the use of the new TART brand for the TART service provided by Placer County, approve the paint, and two, to approve the paint designs for use on Placer County TART buses. And if there's any further questions, I can handle that.
Thank you very much.
Well, so I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
Are you asking that we choose one of the two color schemes or just authorize both color schemes?
I'm asking for both. It's a, the color scheme of blue and green to represent one of these that's going to take on this look. And whether it's blue or green, I think is a decision that, well, the thing I didn't mention is that we also want to meet one more time with our branding committee. We didn't have a chance to really do that between the design and this meeting and maybe finalize and detail out the color scheme with that group to get more eyes on it. So it is, one way or another, it would have these colors, that design on it, which is the wave, the swoosh, and of course, the logo, the name TART.
I don't think we can call it a swoosh.
Swoosh.
I think that's been taken.
Other brand, yeah.
Okay, I would just say on, just aesthetically, on the green, I would go less to the lime and more to a darker forest rather than the sort of lime-ish green.
What we're, the brand logo actually has a pantone-colored green, which maybe Shelley, you could help me. I don't know if it actually represents perfectly on the slide here on the screen. It's always a trick.
Right, right. It's a little bit of a brighter green than a darker green because the darker green, obviously, up against the dark blue, it's, you know, there's a problem with the hue and blending and popping.
Okay, I would also just suggest that we maybe look at the green that's on our logo, the Placer County logo, and maybe make those consistent if that works. And I also want to say, Shelley, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for those of you who don't know her, Shelley's great. I usually know her from cocktails on the beach Friday night in the summer, but...
This is my other side.
This is her other side. And I know that, you know, when she says that she's done outreach to the community and really had conversations, that she is out in the community quite a lot. And if she's bringing forward this recommendation, it's definitely been vetted, and I'm really pleased to see it.
All right, any other questions?
As far as the exterior, I would prefer the, that one. The other one's a little bit too busy for me. This looks a little bit more streamlined. And so anyhow, and when you do the wrap on it, it wouldn't conflict with the color of the top, otherwise the other one would conflict.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this side?
Hi, I'm Ron Trebus with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association and a person who had the fortunate opportunity to be a part of the Resort Triangle Vision Coalition that Will mentioned and also in looking at this. And wanted to just say off the top that we encourage you that, as the supervisor, to move ahead with this proposal and realizing there is some minor work still to be done, and perhaps there will even be a couple of different schemes that do take place on the buses. I think your comment, Supervisor Holmes, about being able to incorporate the wraps as they come forward is a key one. This project, and I recommend Will and the rest of Placer County staff for taking the lead with the Vision Coalition, was one of those, although it was used negatively a little earlier, one of those first pieces of fruit that we could grab that is a part of this Vision Coalition for the transportation of North Lake Tahoe to be competitive with other resort areas and to be able to move ahead in difference to maybe some of the other things we heard this morning, both good and bad for taking a long time in a relatively short period of time so that we could incorporate these into the new buses. And there, with the approval of other people who are running buses, that there's the potential of blending the North Star, definitely the town of Truckee into one greater North Lake Tahoe appearing system for the convenient use of our visitors. So again, we recommend that you give us a go-ahead to move ahead with this, and once we get these buses going, we'll be working for the various wraps too, so that those can be added, as Will said, in due time. And the transportation vision for North Lake Tahoe is well underway in a visible way. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Wright with the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. I also had the pleasure of being part of this committee. But on behalf of the TMA, we felt this was an extraordinary effort with many jurisdictions involved. The goal of the TMA is to reach beyond county lines and make this more of a community versus jurisdictions. So we felt this effort really helped with that. And ultimately, it would be great to have the same-looking buses traveling between all of our communities, making this more of a Truckee North Tahoe region. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
I would move approval of the use of the new TART brand for TART service and approve the paint designs for use on Placer County's TART buses with the comment that we look to see if we can just make it a bit more consistent with the county logo colors.
Second? Okay, motion Montgomery, second Wiegand. All in favor, please, say aye. Aye, Paulson, thank you very much. Moving on to share our Tahoe Marine Patrol Program.
So thank you very much for taking the time to hear our update on the Tahoe Marine Patrol Program. I'm getting over what I think you have right now, so my apologies in advance, as my throat's a little bit raspy. The purpose of my update here this morning is to give you a background on the Marine Patrol Program that we currently operate in the Tahoe Basin, an overview of the duties and the operations of that program, outline some of our limitations with respect to the expanding role that our Marine Patrol Program is taking on in the basin, and to advise you of the condition of the boat and seek direction on the eventual replacement needs of this platform. Couple of facts about Lake Tahoe. These are the frequently asked questions. We are an international tourist destination right here in Placer County. We get anywhere upwards of about 3 million visitors in the basin on a yearly basis. On any given weekend during the peak summer months, we can have... On any given weekend during the peak summer months, we can have 100,000 people somewhere in the North Tahoe area. Quite a few of those people during the summer months are here to enjoy, obviously, the beauty and the recreational activities of the area. And the primary draw is the lake itself. We have boaters, water skiing, scuba diving, paddle boarding, swimming, all the different types of recreational activities that you can expect on a lake, only a much larger There are some boating activities in the winter, primarily commercial, fishing, things of that nature. But obviously, the summertime peak months are the largest draw for events on the lake. There have been an increasing number of organized events at Lake Tahoe. The Ironman being one that was recently, it didn't go through because of the fire, but obviously, the Ironman will probably be back again. In addition to that, the local associations are actively promoting new events to attract more visitors to the Tahoe Basin. As a result of this, there are impacts to law enforcement. There are four county law enforcement jurisdictions on the lake in addition to some PDs and the United States Coast Guard. However, the only two boats that are on the lake year-round are the Placer County Sheriff's Office and the United States Coast Guard. So the Marine Patrol Program, we don't operate full-time all year-round. We have the boat on the water in the need for call-out or search and rescue, boating accidents, things of that nature. However, during the peak summer months, we staff it as a regular patrol shift during the high-impact weekends and times of the week when we expect large organized events to occur. As you can see by this map, Placer County has the largest share of jurisdiction over the lake. So it's 191 square miles of lake. We have roughly 41% of that. In addition to that, we have roughly 22 miles of coastline that include businesses, docks, marinas, beaches, and the associated recreational and visitor activities that go along with As far as I can tell at this stage, we've always had a boat presence on Lake Tahoe, the Sheriff's Office has. The current patrol program has been in place now for approximately 27 years with this particular boat. Some of our responsibilities include vehicle collision investigations, search and rescue. My notes. Pick which glasses I'm going to need. The boat operations for Marine Six are funded primarily from the state of California. And included with that agreement is that we take collision investigations and report those collision investigations to the state. In the absence of a law enforcement jurisdiction taking collision investigations on any body of water, the sheriff of that county is the default law enforcement entity that will take those collision investigations. In addition to that, as a search and rescue platform, that's also part of one of the primary responsibilities of the Marine Six program, the Boat Patrol Program. And that is also part of our search and rescue OES operational plan. Boating accidents and airplane accidents, water rescues are one of the primary responsibilities within those grant-funded programs. Some of the statistics from 2014, they're very active when they're out on the water during the peak summer months. But what can't be measured by the statistics are the preventative measures that they take every day. Just having a presence on the water, driving by the beaches, driving through the marinas, driving by the docks where people may be eating dinner, or on the boats, or on the dock, the restaurants that have docks where you can pull up with the boat. Just having that presence on the water can be a preventative measure. So what it doesn't capture are those things that we do prevent from occurring, such as boating under the influence that may have been thwarted, or a vehicle collision that may have been thwarted. Or just the intervention that they frequently do when they have tourists or visitors on paddle boards or other personal devices. And having a personal flotation device is one of the things that they check periodically as they go through those beaches and dock areas. When large events take place on the lake, Marine Six also provides an additional measure of safety for our visitors. For example, in the Ironman event, during the swim portion of the competition, quite a few of the swimmers became exhausted and had to be removed from the water. I believe at one point in time, Marine Six had about five or six people actually on the boat that had to be pulled out of the water. So going back to the search and rescue, one of the things that Marine Six frequently does is vessel in distress calls, assistance for other agencies with vessel in distress calls, missing boats, overdue boats, or people in the water or boats that are sinking. Marine Six is, with the platform that we have now, capable of doing this in pretty much most weather conditions. As you can imagine, Lake Tahoe's weather conditions can change quickly. You can start with a calm day in the morning and end up with four or five-foot swells by the time afternoon comes around. That can take quite a few people by surprise if they find themselves in distress. You have to have a patrol boat that can get out there onto the water in a timely manner that can affect either a rescue or recovery or assistance. What we're currently using right now is a 28-foot aluminum Almar boat. It was built in 1987. It's been on the water since 1987. It's large enough to handle the variety of conditions in Tahoe, but still small enough that we can maneuver around marinas, docks, and get up close to the beach. In fact, frequently during the peak summer months, when the traffic in the basin is really bad, oftentimes, if there's a disturbance or something of that nature occurring close to the shore, the Marine Patrol Unit can frequently get there faster than our patrol deputies in a vehicle. So consider it like a patrol car, but it's on the water. To accomplish their mission, they have a variety of equipment. We have tools for search and rescue operations, operations to find missing boats or people, to rescue victims that may be in the water, or to assist vessels that are sinking or in distress. It's equipped for a variety of operations that you can expect in a region such as Lake Not without its limitations. In 1987, when they put the boat on the water, I don't know that they had the same types of organized events and activities that are occurring in the basin today. As those things have evolved over time, so has the mission profile of Marine Six. And it's showing its age. After 27 years on the water, there is some degradation to the hull. There is water intrusion into the hull that's caused approximately five-degree list to the starboard side. And the marine electronics, as we've updated and upgraded those marine electronics, the basic infrastructure of the boat is not able to support all of those electronics, and they've actually had electronics failures and equipment failures while they were out on missions, search and rescue missions, or looking for boats. In order to determine where those water intrusions occur would require intrusive actions to the boat. There is only one accessible panel on the top of the boat that allows us to get to the fuel tanks. The rest of the hull is inaccessible. So in order to get into there, to determine exactly where the water intrusion is occurring or what the condition of the hull is overall, would require a very cost-prohibitive process of basically cutting the boat open, with no guarantees at that point that it would be repairable. The overall condition that we have found so far when they did open that one accessible hatch was, what has been described to me as an unidentifiable black brime that has permeated the metal parts between the fuel tanks and the equipment, which just leaves us to question what the rest of the interior of the hull would look like at this point. Some of the limitations of the platform that we have now, I mentioned the Ironman competition when we pulled swimmers out of the water. The cabin of the boat is really only designed for two people. There are two additional jump seats behind the primary boating officer seats, but they're unsecured jump seats. In addition to that, there's insufficient space for patient care. The heating system in the current cabin is, can't recall exactly how it was described to me, but it's basically like a window defroster. As you can imagine, in winter conditions here on the water, or even summer conditions when the temperature cools down, if you've got people that you've just pulled out of the water with hypothermia, basically, you're putting them on the back deck of the boat. So the cabin isn't really designed for the patient care that we have found a need for in recent years. I mentioned the electronics having shut down. And additionally, as the boat has aged, the cost of maintenance and the cost of preventative Which brings us here. I think that, at this stage, when I came up here in July and started a top-down assessment of the North Tahoe Station, the equipment, operations, the Marine Patrol Platform was clearly something that during the summertime is an integral public safety platform that we use to ensure that our visitors, community, and businesses that operate on the water are safe. But at this stage, it seems clear, in order to maintain that operation for the next 27 years, it's time to consider replacement of the platform. That's no small decision, and we felt that it was very prudent at this juncture to get some direction from this board on how we should proceed forward. We have had some very preliminary discussions with both the CEO's office and procurement, but at this juncture, it would seem prudent to update this board on the status of the Marine Patrol Program and how best to maintain that public safety platform moving forward. With the blessing of this board, and before moving forward, we intend to work with procurement to define and refine our needs, as to specifically what sort of a platform we need. If we're going to get something that has, that's going to meet the needs of the next 27 years and the different sorts of mission profiles that we can expect, we need to probably reach out to different vendors and start establishing some sort of a roadmap for the equipment that we're going to need, the platform that will carry that equipment. It would be my goal, after I've done that, to return to this board at a later date and present you with the options that we have in front of us. And with that, any questions?
Any more members? Supervisor Montgomery?
I want to...
Your mic, you pushed it a little bit in there.
Long, but, thank you. I want to start by thanking you for bringing this to us before it's an absolutely urgent and critical need. It's always good to have a little bit of lead time to have these kinds of discussions. This might be a question for Chief Schwartz, but does the fire district have any kind of boat or on-water response?
So...
I didn't see that on the list of responders. Oh, God, he's stripping.
For the record, my Schwartz, North Tahoe Fire, Fire Chief. To answer your question, currently, North Tahoe Fire does not have a fireboat. Several of the other fire agencies around. It is something that we are now investigating and trying to see what our mission would be, and whether that would be something that would, partnership with the Sheriff's, we would be certainly interested in.
So there's a possibility that the two agencies might be able to work together to identify a single vessel or two different vessels?
I think that's a question that is probably, needs to be answered by looking at what the missions are of the two organizations, where a lot of times, everything we do, we does collaborate and we can share, and then there's oftentimes when we can't. So I think this is, you know, a good forum to start with that discussion as to whether it's something that we can collaborate on or not.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I'd love it if maybe those discussions could happen before this comes back to our board, just so we can maybe understand if that will or will not work. You have two very different missions. I understand that. So it's certainly not a given that one vessel is the solution. Thanks, Mike.
So, we have had internally some discussions on that topic in the past, and it's, and Chief Schwartz can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there are different statutory parameters that also come into play when you start placing firefighting equipment on a boat. It changes some of the dynamics. Although I do believe, and my guys in the back who are the experts on this can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have had firefighter paramedics on our boats with us for different events in the past.
Yeah, I think my husband has been one of them on occasion. So, thank you. Thank you, Chief Schwartz. A couple of other questions. One, just let me start by saying that I think having a, you know, seaworthy or lake-worthy vessel is critically important up here, because we do great search and rescue work, and we do great public safety work out there that we could not do without a vessel. One of the issues that you brought up under defining needs and in your comments and in the sheriff's own staff report, is the concern about the increase in large organized events. How would, how would having a different boat help with addressing that need? Because you're not the first agency that's come to me and said, hey, we've identified needs with this increase in tourist events.
Excellent question. Thank you. The cabin size on the boat is the primary limitation as far as the larger organized events. Cabin size and equipment. Whenever you have a large number of people on the water, the likelihood of people going into the water under less-than-ideal circumstances increases. The water temperature, obviously, in Lake Tahoe can be very cold. Hypothermia can set in very quickly. If you're out on a large organized event, you may not be able to transport that person quickly back to shore, or you may have to hold them on the boat for some length of time until another boat can come and pick them up. In cases like that, in order to treat and/or prevent additional symptoms of hypothermia or just prevent hypothermia from setting in even after out of the water, you need a larger cabin size that you can place someone in that's heated, rather than out on an open deck. Especially if we have conditions that are less-than-ideal weather. For example, I believe the first Ironman, the temperature when they went into the water that morning was 38 degrees. In addition to that, it's equipment needs. As we deploy to these events, different types of equipment need to be brought onto the boat. Gurneys, litters, backboards, things of that nature. And if you do end up with a patient, for example, on a gurney or a backboard, you're putting them out on the open deck. And in addition to that, if you've got any kind of rough conditions, you're exposing them to the elements at the same time. So for us, it's a balance of cabin size versus boat size. If the boat size itself is too large, that's going to limit our ability to get into certain marinas and docks or to get close to shore. On the other hand, if you go with a boat size that's too small, you end up with a cabin size that's too small. So there's, really need to do some work in that particular area to make sure we're keeping our boat size within a reasonable parameters that allow us to get where we need to go. But that has a cabin size that, A, can accommodate staff, additional staff, if we're deploying out on a search and rescue, for example, in the wintertime, and large enough to account for the fact that we could be bringing people back who need to be inside of that cabin as opposed to on the deck.
Okay. And then my last question is, I'm going to make the assumption that you'll be working with the TRPA to make sure that it's compliant with all their rules and regulations about engines and what are and aren't allowed on the lake.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Love the idea.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions? Any members of the public have any questions before we take any action here? Seeing none, my way, you know, if what you're doing is you're asking us to, we as a board, support continuing on with the Marine Patrol Program, personally, I do. But in terms of potential options, recommendations for replacement, that's Ed's job. You know, it's Ed and Devon got to figure out what their priorities are and how they're going to go about meeting their priorities. And so, you know, in the past, Ed's worked with Janine on the helicopter. I'm sure work is not a cheap item.
It's probably not as expensive as a helicopter.
Probably not as expensive as a helicopter, right. But, you know, I'd encourage Ed and Devon to work with, work with CEO's office to figure out in the normal budgeting process, how do we account for that kind of a capex? And, I mean, no doubt, a 27-year-old boat, a little old, especially with the kind of wear and tear it gets up here on this lake. So, don't doubt you need it, but I'm not prepared today to do anything that I would say. Appreciate the work that you guys do, and if our elected sheriff thinks it's important for you guys to continue it, I encourage you to work with the CEO's staff, figure out how we make it a priority from a budget standpoint.
Very good.
Supervisor Montgomery, anything else?
Oh, no. I'm...
Okay, we are...
That's actually why I'm...
Yeah, so just in terms of direction also, my comments are essentially exactly the same as Kirk's. When we went through the helicopter exercise and Janine was so, I know she doesn't want to be mentioned, but she's so helpful in this, you know, the sheriff's budget priorities are theirs, but the board's purview on that is actually the overall budget. So, you know, if this is similar to a helicopter and having no idea... So, you know, if this is similar to a helicopter and having no idea what this thing is going to cost, you know, I want to make sure that our CFO looks at the financial implications of all of that, and I'm open to any options, but if there are some extraordinary total county budget ramifications, that threshold is going to have to be met such that the arguments convince me that we have a path and a plan that makes sense, but certainly want to maximize our levels of service up here as much as possible, and the notion certainly seems like it has merit.
Agreed.
So we received our update, I think we've provided the direction. So I'd like to see if any other members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move on to the formant of this 1,000 and an update on our Empower Plaster Program.
Almost good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. Pleasure to be here with you this morning to talk about Empower. Before I get started, I want to mention that I have Greg Jones with CR Business Council here. They've been our partner up here in Tahoe on Empower items, both from a technical aspect and also from an outreach aspect. And I also want to take the opportunity to just call out that later on in your agenda, you'll adjourn for those who are interested to a tour of the improvements that have been financed through Empower here in Grand Lebakan, and that will be led by Ron Parsons. And it is almost literally a cook's tour since most of that has to do with kitchen. With that, the first item before you is an update on the Empower program. You have a report in front of you. I'd like to step through that, just hitting some highlights on that. The program since inception has accepted over 1,000 applications now, and we have approved 725 applications totaling $25 million, and we've actually provided funding on over 600 applications totaling almost $20 million now. The difference between the approved and the funded has to do with the fact that the projects have to be finalized before we provide the financing. So the difference are projects that are in progress, and as soon as they're done, then they'll receive financing. We have almost 200 different contractors participating in the program, and when I say participating, I don't mean just signed up to work in the program, but they have actually either received funding or we are currently working on active applications on behalf of those contractors' clients. In the last year, we have started to participate in the California PACE Loss Reserve Program. The governor and legislature, working with the state treasurer, has established a fund in order to provide money for claims on behalf of lenders who may experience a loss due to a default on a PACE assessment. So far, I don't think any claims have been made or there's been a need to pay out any. Your board approved participation in that program, and as part of that, we were required to charge a quarter of a percent on the amount being financed to pay for this program. It has, within two weeks of the new state treasurer taking office, he's indicated that he has found other funding to operate that program. That money was to operate that program, not to provide for the loss claims, but for the operations funding. And he is going to be taking an emergency regulation to the CAFAB board to, so that we don't have to collect that fee or pay for that fee. So we have already, in anticipation of that ceased collection of that fee, our first payment was going to be to the state in March, and we have been advised that we're not going to need to pay that, so we will need to refund those who we have collected the fees from to date. The other issue that we have had to deal with over the life of this program is our the FHA concerns, and again, the CAFAB loss reserve was an effort to try to address those concerns. As recently as December 23rd, the FHFA reiterated their stance, so it really has not changed. There continues to be this détente, if you will. They have not taken any enforcement actions so far. In Southern California, the HERO program has now done almost 400,000, 400 million in assessments, so it's really taking off across the state, and other programs are also continuing to ramp up. Most recently, related to our program, we have begun to talk to investors who will take out the advanced financing that the treasury has provided in order to replenish the fund. Those conversations have been very positive, and so we're continuing to have initial conversations with a variety of investors to get their feedback, to see what they would look for in terms of structure of a deal and that type of thing. So we'll be looking at some point to come back to the board on that. In the interim, because the program has been ramping up so quickly since we lifted the residential suspension in July of 2013, we may need to come back to the board for an initial, excuse me, an additional authorization of funds from the treasury, which we had talked about the potential for that way back in 2010 when we first brought the program to the board. With that, you do have a copy of the program in front of you, and I have hit on some of the main points in terms of number of applications and amount funded. We have currently been using the American Council for an energy-efficient economy to calculate job creation, and so based on the 20 million in financing that we have provided so far, our calculation is that has created about almost 400 jobs locally. We know that contractors don't recognize the jurisdictional lines, and we're pulling contractors from throughout the region, but we also know we have heavy participation by Placer County-based contractors. On that report, you can see that the bulk of our financing goes to solar system installations, but we also do have a sizable number of HVAC installations as well. In fact, the Grand Lebakan improvements are HVAC systems and boilers and energy efficiency-related improvements other than, than solar. The report also shows applications approved and funded in the unincorporated area and then also in the incorporated areas. You can see that there is a correlation there in terms of participation in the program based on PG&E territory versus Roseville Electric territory, so I wanted to call that out. There isn't quite the incentive with the lower rates in Roseville Electric. The report also shows our deal flow in terms of applications received and funded, and then there is a breakout for your reference by supervisory district and then communities within the supervisory districts, and then what is being financed within those supervisory districts. And then we also show a breakdown of non-residential projects that have been approved and are either headed towards our financing or have been financed, to give you an idea of the variety of businesses that have approached us for financing and that we've provided financing. They are predominantly solar. What we have found in many cases is that these businesses will do the energy efficiency improvements themselves and then come to us on the solar installation. And then on the last page, there is a financial report. The top two sections are on a cash basis in terms of cash actually received by the program and cash actually spent, and then there is accrual information down below. And then we also have a summary of our debt balances because we're using a combination of bond financing for the financing that we provide to the property owners and then for operations, a TRAN. And we expect, based on our cash balances and revenue received, that we will be paying down on that TRAN substantially before the end of the year, and we will be looking at paying that TRAN off sometime next year, and then the program to be operational on a cash basis without the need for a TRAN. So with that, I can answer any questions that you might have related to the program update.
Okay. Questions by board members, Supervisor again?
First of all, Janine, congratulations. Great program, great progress so far. For some reason that I can't explain, I have it in my head that I didn't expect solar to be the preponderance of projects, and I don't know where that comes from, but caused me to think, you know, I just, I guess I, something I had told me that the lower-hanging fruit would be non-solar projects for energy efficiency, at least early on, I guess. So I'm just curious if you have any comment on that, and/or were there any other surprises to you of things that are different from what you expected when we started this?
Well, first of all, let me mention that on a requirement that we've had since inception of the program is that property owners attend an informational seminar, and one of the things that we hit on in that informational seminar is something that we call reduce before you produce. So reduce your consumption through energy efficiency before you start producing with renewable generation. Especially on a larger home, we have a number of projects on very large homes that the solar system will be over $100,000 that you may be able to install a smaller solar system if you have created efficiencies first. In California, solar has been the recipient of a number of incentive programs over the years, and so contractors are very aware of those programs. To a certain extent, the contractors also view this program as another tool for financing. And so the solar industry is quite robust in terms of not just an infrastructure, but also advertising and, and marketing. And so that's part of it. They're, they're ready to jump on, if you will, more so than maybe other contractors, but we do promote the other aspects of the program as well. And then to the extent that the local utility providers provide incentives for other types of improvements like HVAC doors and windows, then, you know, we have seen a little bit of fluctuation based on what's available in terms of other incentives. So hopefully that answers your question.
Jennifer?
Janine, thank you. Great update on the program. I, I think what I'd really like to make clear for folks here in the Tahoe area is there's a lot of that low-hanging fruit here. We have a lot of older homes that have substandard windows, doors, insulation, and roofs. And while, while the focus on roofs has, to a certain extent, been on cool roofs down in the valley, Janine and I have had some conversations about what I call warm roofs, which is keeping the heat in, in Tahoe, rather than keeping the heat out in, in the west end of the county. And I would really strongly encourage folks who maybe have older homes that need some remodeling, that the PACE program that we have, the Empower program through Placer County, is a really incredible opportunity at a fairly competitive interest rate to do that work on your home that's going to save you so much money long-term. I keep hoping to take advantage of it myself, but I have too many other things on my list, unfortunately. But I really would encourage people to take a look at it, particularly roofs. That's a real issue up here. Roofs are a huge one-time investment, and this is an opportunity for folks to really come in and finance that over time. So, thank you.
Okay, any member of the public wish to... Oh, sorry, Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you for the update, Janine. I just wanted to, as you know, one of my tenants has installed solar on their business on the property that they lease from me, and I just want to put in a good word for Rick Julian, Tristan Butcher, and is it Mike Carnahan? Mike Carnahan? Is it Mike Carnahan?
Ben, Ben, yes.
They work with us very efficiently, and they just did a great job, so I just want to put a good word in for them, so thank you.
Thank you, nice to hear. I'll pass that along.
Any member of the public have any questions or comments on the report we've just received? So now we'll go ahead and move on to item 8B, which is an action item being asked to approve, an application from Folsom Lake Ford Kia mount not to exceed a hefty price tag.
So, yes. In the summer of 2013, your board also authorized expansion of the program and authorized specifically Folsom, the city of Folsom, to come on into the program. So this project is located in Folsom, and it is for the Folsom Lake Ford and Kia application, and it is to install interior lighting with an LED retrofit kit, replace nine HVAC systems with Energy Star-rated equipment, install a cool roof, and also install a photovoltaic system roof mount. Because the total dollar amount of $1,562,591.96 is over the $500,000 threshold that triggers board approval, that's why we're here today to ask for your approval. Once this, once the board has approved this, then based on that approval, we will go forward with execution of a contract with Folsom Lake Ford for, for this installation. They have met all of the requirements. The county's steering committee has met on this, reviewed it, and recommended approval, and the city of Folsom also has a steering committee, and they have met and recommend approval on this application. With that, be glad to answer any, any questions.
Any questions? Any comments or questions from members of the public? See, then I'll bring it back to the board for consideration.
Move through the item.
It's been moved in second to approve the item as presented by all those in favor today.
This last item is of a housekeeping nature, and your board...
We need to adjourn as...
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
...in Placer County Public Financing Up Course.
You were, you were ahead of me. So, in July of 2013, your board approved an amendment to the loan agreement and to the bonds for the Empower program. Those agreements were to adjust the interest rate and allow for a step-up rate structure on the bonds and a different cost recovery structure from the assessment rate that is charged the property owners, which is 6%. The Finance Authority has to also take that action. There, the reason that there is, I'm going to just go ahead and address this right up front, the reason there has been such a lag between when the board took the action, and this is that our outside bond council had concerns about the fact that this JPA membership is comprised of the county, and now the successor agency was originally formed with the RDA. And when the successor agency dissolves, there will not be a JPA who will stand as the issuer behind the bonds. We have most recently been able to get the concurrence of our bond council to go ahead and move through pending some of, because of the fact that we have identified a number of alternatives for addressing that, which at some point we will need to come back to your board on. But because we were able to identify a couple of different alternatives for that, the bond council said, go ahead and have the, the Public Finance Authority approve it, and then we'll come back with alternatives. So at some point, we will need a different JPA or to bring on a new member or to refinance these bonds over to another JPA. And so I've been working specifically with, with county council and the outside council on identifying exactly how we remedy that. With that, any questions you might have, be glad to answer again.
Questions by board members on the resolution? Okay, so now, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? All right, we're being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing amendment to the existing Empower bonds. You're in motion.
Moving motion. Second.
Take motion home, second, why Gannett. You want to approve the item? Home, therefore, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Thank you, Janine, for your report.
Thank you.
At this time, we adjourn this Placer County Public Finance Authority convening this Placer County Board of Supervisors, who are going to take up item 9A, Squaw Valley
Assuming it's afternoon, I'm going to say good afternoon. Didn't peek at my watch before I headed up here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office here at North Lake Tahoe. We provided a presentation to your board last October, and I'm just providing a bit of a status update on information that we have gleaned regarding the Squaw Valley Museum proposal to date. So at your October board meeting, I, in conjunction with Bill Clark from the Squaw Valley Museum Foundation, requested board direction regarding its preference between two potential sites for a future museum. And I'm here today to provide a status update. The sites that were brought to you are the county's existing Squaw Valley Park Site, which is at the corner of Highway 89 and Squaw Valley Road, and the Poulsen Family Squaw Valley Gateway Site on the northern corner of that same intersection. Your board asked staff at that time to return to a future board meeting to discuss pros and cons of each site and to gather information and report on power line options for the gateway site. Since that time, in coordination with the County Executive Office and Economic Development Staff, Facilities Department staff has provided us with an initial look at nine different areas of study at both sites. Those include Forest Service deed restrictions on the parcels or parcel, zoning, traffic, parking, year-round use of the Squaw Valley Park Site, existing use conflicts, topographic site constraints, utilities availability, including sewer, water, and electricity, and economic development potential. While a couple of the topical areas have clear answers, at this time, most do not, and will require further legal analysis, federal determinations, and specific site studies, some of which could be costly. There are two areas where clear conclusions can be made, and I'd like to just mention those to you. The park site is currently not zoned for museums, which would require a general plan amendment if a project were to be proposed and approved at that location, while the gateway site is already zoned to allow for museum development. The gateway site is served with water and electricity, but is currently not served by sewer. The park site is served with water, but not electricity or sewer. The lack of electricity at the park site means that power lines will have to be extended either from across Highway 89 or the gateway site where the substation is to serve the park site either above ground or below ground. But that's all the information we have on the electrical so far. The Squaw Valley Museum Foundation, in its October presentation, highlighted the overhead power lines on the northern gateway or Poulsen Site as a significant constraint that, if not resolved, would preclude its interest in developing the museum at that site due to aesthetic reasons. At your board's direction, CEO and Economic Development Staff have met with representatives from Liberty Utilities onsite at the gateway parcel in late November to follow up on initial findings that were developed during the museum concept plan that we presented to your board back in October. Three undergrounding and/or pole relocation concepts were discussed at that onsite meeting, and based on the finding that the park site is not served with electricity, we're going to have to go back and ask them to also analyze options for serving that site as well. Liberty, we were in touch with them last week to kind of follow up on when they might have some more information. They expect to have some preliminary information available for our review later this month, and that is consistent with what they told us in November, that it was going to take them a good month to develop the information we're asking for. So staff intends to complete the issues analysis, compile that with the power line information provided by Liberty Utilities, and return to your board with options for next steps at a future meeting. Happy to answer any questions. We've got Economic Development Staff, Facilities Staff here as well, and I know there are some members of the museum board who would be probably likely providing some public feedback.
Thank you. Any questions, Jennifer, before we open up the public? All right, seeing none. Members of the public wish to address the board on this item?
Good afternoon. I'm John Wilcox. I am a 25-year resident of Squaw Valley and a member of the Museum Foundation Board. I'm here today to talk about delay. As many of you know, for more than five years, we have been trying to secure a location to build a world-class museum that would celebrate the 1960 Winter Olympics and the winter sports heritage of the Sierra Nevada. During all of this time, our first choice of location has been to site the museum in Squaw Valley Park. Almost everybody who has participated in these many discussions has agreed that the park site is the best and perhaps the only location that makes sense. The park site was chosen by numerous meetings, discussions, and investigations by museum experts and a site committee of local residents. However, there have been two people who have been actively opposed to this site selection, and somehow, five years of delay has occurred. This delay has caused a terrible loss of momentum and made a successful outcome much more difficult to achieve. Partway along, partway through this long delay, we tried to find an alternate site, and we spent a lot of time and money studying the other site that is the subject that Jennifer just mentioned. And we had already analyzed that site and found it impossible to build on, to build a successful museum on, and had wasted a lot of additional time and money. But, and that was two years ago. Then in July of 2013, we were approached by Placer County and asked to cooperate with them to further consider that alternate site. At that time, we told Placer County staff that we had already devoted a lot of time and money to such a study, but they advised us that they had some new ideas that could potentially make that site acceptable and eliminate many or all of its current disadvantages and problems. So we agreed with Placer County's request to delay our program while they conducted their investigation, and we cooperated with them during the course of their study. We also asked that this study not delay us for more than six months. However, this delay has now lasted 18 months, and the main problems with the Tower of Nations site have not been resolved despite the good efforts of Placer County, especially Jennifer Merchant and Paul Griffith. They have worked very hard, and despite the best efforts of professional land planners, the problems of this site have not been resolved. It's clearly putting lipstick on a pig. The power lines are not going to go away, and that's been the main problem all along, is the power lines. But there's a bunch of other problems also. Therefore, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to direct county staff to advise us how we can apply to get the park site approved. There are a few things, and Jennifer mentioned some of them, that might be problems with the park site. However, they can all be easily solved. I want to mention a couple of the main arguments against the park site. One argument has been that...
Sir, just try to wrap up your comments.
Okay, I'll be done in about two minutes. Is that okay? One argument is that the museum is a private entity, and private entities do not belong on public property. That's wrong. The Museum Foundation is a 501(c)(3) California corporation, which is a public benefit corporation. A second objection has been that museums do not belong in parks. That's not true. There are many famous museums and famous parks all over the world. Golden Gate Park in San Francisco, Balboa Park in San Diego, Central Park in New York, Yosemite National Park, Yellowstone National Park, Grand Canyon National Park, Immigrant Trail Museum in Donner Memorial State Park. The deed restrictions on commercial activities on the park site, that is not a problem. We have researched this with the Forest Service and had expert legal advice, and that can be easily solved. And finally, a new museum will not interfere with any park activities that are present now or even thought of. And a new museum would provide flush toilets for 24/7 for the use of all park visitors, which are not available now, and could provide a drinking fountain and viewing area for the new pickleball courts, which are soon to be built nearby. And the new museum would pay the county a modest land rent, which would reduce the county cost for park maintenance. So in conclusion, if Placer County wants to have a new world-class museum, we need to end the delay. Placer County is probably the only place in the world that has hosted Olympic Games and doesn't have anything significant to show for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, supervisors, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm Eddie Encinas. I've skied in the Sierra since the 1950s. I was a volunteer at the 1960 Olympics, and my husband was a competitor. We, I'll put them back on. We have lived in the area since 1962, and like my fellow board members and many of you, I have a keen interest in ski history. Five years ago, right here at Grundlebachen, our board watched with pride and great expectations as the museum planners and architects we had selected presented their plan for our future museum. It would have a Hall of Fame for past, present, and future athletes, where local events could take place, lectures, movies, temporary exhibits, parties, and events that we hadn't even thought of yet. Much of the museum would be devoted to telling the story from dream to reality of a Winter Olympics unlike any other the world has ever seen before or since. I remember being fascinated with the way a modern museum could bring to life the unique history of skiing and the ski area development in the Sierra Nevada with innovative and experiential displays. Our enthusiasm grew as we spent the day adding new ideas and learning how modern, interactive displays would inform and entertain visitors. We discussed fundraisers and went to work on a gala celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Olympics in 2010, which sold out to 600 attendees and filled the stage with present and past Olympians. That same year, we set up a small information center in the Squaw Valley Village. It attracted a steady stream of curious visitors from around the world, some of whom had been here in 1960 and had stories to tell, artifacts and photos to share. They signed their names, they left donations, and they asked, "When will you have a museum?" Today, at our temporary site in the Boat Works, visitors ask that same question. Do you plan to build a museum? As a writer for Ski History Magazine, the editors are always asking, "When can we announce the opening of your museum?" Since those days filled with hope and promise, the museum planner has passed away. We have engaged a new California architect with experience in museums and in snow country design. We have a team of project managers with years of experience in museum planning eager to go to work. We've met with capital campaign consultants from Sacramento, who say, "We can't help you until you have a site." All of these important contacts, as well as what's left of our board, are waiting, waiting for a site to be determined, knowing that that site must be at the entrance to Squaw Valley, and it must be in the park. In closing, I'd like to say that I live at the intersection of Highway 89 and Squaw Valley Road, where I spend a lot of time waiting for the light to change and to cross the road. Meanwhile, I gaze across my driveway, from my driveway, across the road at the strip mall on my right and the park on the left. I watch tourists snap photos of the Tower of Nations with the big electrical grid and an abandoned building and an empty parking lot in the background. When I look at the other side, I am grateful for the Squaw Valley residents and the county who had the foresight to preserve that little park, and I'm hopeful that someday that park will not be limited just to summer use, but will be open year-round with a wonderful museum that can be used and enjoyed by visitors to the area from locally and from around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Kathy Betson. I just have a question. If it's a private museum...
Could you try to, more directly into the microphone there?
I'm sorry. Okay. My question is, if it's a private museum, why are they coming to Placer County? Is it Placer County land?
Is it, I'm sorry, is it Placer County land?
Land that they're looking for. It is. Okay. And I just want to make a comment. I worked at the Gatekeepers Museum for 10 years, run by the North Lake Tahoe Historical Society, which is on California State Parks land, and they have, over the years, many exhibits on the Olympics, and I just thought you should know that, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. It was just an update for our information in terms of status at this point, so no action is necessary. We'll go ahead and move on to the presentation by North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, who are going to progress on the Placer County's Tourism Development Master Plan.
And Chairman Ulller, I'm going to kick that one off, too, and then I'll toss it over to Sandy Evans-Hall with the Resort Association. So just a little bit of background of where we've been and where we are today. Since 1996, Placer County has completed two separate master plans to direct investment and tourism development at North Lake Tahoe. The first plan in 1995 recommended a 2% transient occupancy tax increase to fund improved visitor-serving capital projects and transportation services so that North Lake Tahoe could better compete with other mountain resort destinations, and also recommended the formation of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to provide input to Placer County regarding expenditure of funds for marketing and project development. The second plan, completed in 2004, acknowledged the need to continue implementation of visitor-serving capital projects such as bike trails, wayfinding signage, and sidewalks, and the need to further improve the area's transit system. But it also focused on mitigating tourism impacts by highlighting workforce housing and environmentally sustainable tourism development. Creation of a 2015 master plan has been supported to date by several economic competitive resort destination and transportation research documents. The current effort is a work in progress, and today's presentation by Sandy Evans-Hall, Resort Association Executive Officer, will provide your board with an early check-in on draft concepts currently being considered. What you see here today will receive broader public input. Did I lose my mic? I couldn't hear myself for a second. And will likely undergo additional reviews and iterations before county staff recommends a final draft for your consideration later this year. Now I'd like to toss it over to Sandy to provide an overview of some of the draft concepts being currently formulated by the Resort Association.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Chairman Ulller. I'm very pleased to be here today to talk to you about where we're going with this draft master plan, primarily because, as you all know, tourism is really one of the most important industries that we have here in East Placer County, and certainly impacts all of Placer County in terms of the revenues that it generates. It's over $120 million in just lodging tax or lodging sales, an incredible amount of sales tax, and then when you look at the real estate valuation, there's an incredible piece that Tahoe brings. This is Placer County's plan, so while I'm up here presenting it, it's really just been the role of the NLTRA to help bring all of the elements together and then go out and take this to the community and get their input and take all of their feedback, and then bring it back to you to adopt it as your plan. We have used committee members... We have used committee members of Ron Parson from Grand Lebachin here, Wally Auerbach are just our past chair, Jennifer Merchant, of course, has been on our committee, Alex Merlados. We have invited and love to have the participation of Joy Doyle and Gary Davis from the Business Associations. We have Shawna Doherty from Fresh Tracks Communications, and then we have recently brought in Design Workshop to help us with all of the verbiage and text, and Stephanie Grigsby is the lead person there, and then our staff. So this has been something that we have been working on really since 2012, and we're getting close to finishing this, similar to the work that you've done on your area plans. This does take a while to really pull all together.
Oh, I have the clicker. Want me to do that for you, Sandy, or do you want to take it?
Go ahead and do it. Now, let you do it. I'll just give you a little signal and...
There it goes.
Thanks, Jennifer. This is the vision statement that we have so far. Again, this is a draft, and we are working on this. I think we'd like to consolidate it a little bit more, but North Lake Tahoe is known as the premier international mountain resort destination on the West Coast and Intermountain West, and in order to maximize enjoyment of Lake Tahoe's unsurpassed natural environment, visitors and residents alike enjoy high-quality, natural, and built environments, convenient, diverse, and world-class visitor experiences. That's what we'd like to see. We have really identified five different key focus areas that the master plan has been developed around. Visitor facilities and experiences, transportation, marketing and sales, visitor information, and then resource development are the five that we've done, and under each of these, we have set a goal for those as we move forward. The other thing is, as Jennifer has mentioned, you know, we have been working on a variety of research components that really back up the data that then supports the recommendations that we're working on right now. These have been the, we did an update to the Dean Runyon Economic Impact of Tourism in Placer County Study. We have that. We have Intercept Research that we did in this last summer, which really gave us a good feel of what our visitors are wanting and what they're seeing, and we have done a competitive analysis and a situational analysis through Strategic Marketing Group, Carl Roboto, put that together for us. We have a multitude of transportation studies that we've been working on with the transit vision, as well as our long-range and our working plan that we continue to update each year on our capital investments. So all of these really being put together, as well as the, you know, the kind of talking to all of our committees, all of our committee structure, our Board of Directors, we have been, and our key partners, all of these people have helped to bring us to the point where we're at today, which is the recommendations that we are going to be hopefully taking forward to the community to ask their opinion of. So starting with visitor facilities and experiences, one of the, so I'll let you click that ahead. And again, there we go. One of the successes that we have found really over the last few years, prior to my arrival here, was really developing this human-powered sports initiative. And, you know, we've been able, we've been successful in bringing some key events to the area, as you know, with Ironman, which we're getting ready to sign another two-year agreement on top of the three that we have. USA Cycling, the amateur championships, will be here in June. We've got Spartan Races, which are a very exciting kind of a world championship tough mutter event that will be here in October of this next year. So we have really found that these events have helped to showcase the ability that our visitors have to do these activities, these human-powered sports activities in our area. What we'd like to do in this, in this plan, is really try to take and stretch this whole idea even a little bit farther. Could we potentially be the high-altitude training center in Northern California for these types of sports? Could we develop, at some point in time, some type of a health and wellness and performance center that would really help people that are coming up here already to train for these activities see this as a place where we might be able to bring larger groups for training? So these are some of the things that we're envisioning and dreaming about. We'd like to invest in facilities for world-class events and continue to maintain and complete the entire trail system. We're moving forward in that. It's a costly venture, but we hope to be able to complete that in the near future. In terms of the, next slide, arts, culture, and history, we think that that's another area that Tahoe really shines in. We have a great heritage in this area. We are seeing a variety of opportunities right now in terms of visual and performing arts facilities and venues that we might want to take a look at over the next 10 years. We think heritage facilities fits into that. Interpretive centers, we have, you know, a good center in Tahoe City. We'd like to really take a look at Kings Beach and maybe some of our ski resorts as places that we can, you know, expand that. And then art and public places, which is already starting to really take off in Tahoe City and Kings Beach. Additional ideas that we have come up with are, you know, maximizing parklands and creating town center gathering spaces as we start to develop, especially the Kings Beach area. We're working on improving the digital connectivity, and, you know, it's hard to say whether it's broadband or cellular in 10 years' time from now, but we need to really be on top of what is that going to be that allows our visitors and our guests to be able to continue to work while they're here or continue to connect outside of the area. We really want to encourage commercial and lodging redevelopment at the lake, and that has been one of our top goals really over the last four years, and something that I think Placer County is doing an extraordinary job in being proactive on. And continuing to fund the maintenance of the facilities that we have, you know, that's something that, you know, as the trails have been around for a while, we're starting to see them break down, and we're going to have to put some dollars into maintaining those capital investments we've made. In transportation, which is our next area, a couple of key things that I think, you know, we're going to have to work on over the next 10 years, and these really go hand in hand. One is implementing a transit vision, which is that frequent free service that we'd like to see throughout the resort area that mimics what is available in other resort areas. We also have to develop at the same time good region-wide service, so whether we're bringing in from people from the Reno Airport or the Sacramento Airport, or trying to bring people up from San Francisco, the Bay Area, I think we have to be able to do that really well. And then we have to support the increase of air service into our local airports. Like I said, these all go hand in hand. If we really focus on the air service, but we're not taking care of the ground service, then our guests really may be disappointed when they get here at their ability to move around and get to the places and the recreation that they'd like to do. So we've got to be working all three simultaneously. As we move into marketing and sales, you know, there's a couple of things that I want to draw your attention to. One is, you know, investing in world-class events. As I said, you know, we've been successful in that area, and I think we have to continue to look at that. It is not just the event itself that may bring in revenues to our area, but what it does is it allows us to truly showcase the assets that we have here. So whether it's during the ski season and bringing in World Cup events or national championships, whether it's during the summer seasons and being able to really explore some of those human-powered sports activities and what they can do, it's an incredible way to market our area internationally, domestically, and really showcase those assets. The other one is to increase our domestic destination visitor market. This is looking at that visitor that stays a longer period of time, that tends to stay greater than the two or three nights that our Bay Area visitor might stay. So we think that we should be working as a destination marketing organization on how do we increase that segment of our market. And then growing visitation to our lakeshore and mountain areas during those cross seasons, you know, cross-marketing those areas is really an opportunity for us. We know that we have rooms available during the winter at the lakeshore. We know that we have rooms available in the mountain areas during the summertime. So we've already created some inter-community marketing campaigns such as Touch the Lake and Peak Your Adventures, and I think we can also expand that to look at varieties of segments of audiences, whether it's educational tours or other things that we might be able to bring in during those seasons to really maximize the lodging stays, midweek, during the week, longer stays. And then, as I did mention, the LA market right now for us, we're putting more dollars into that market this winter season than we have in the past. We're up to a 50-50 spin between LA, San Diego, and the Bay Area, which in the past few years has been about a 70-30 spin. So we're trying to do that because the LA market can really be seen as that long-distance market. They stay an average of eight days, and they spend a considerable amount more in the area when they're here than our Bay Area market does. So this is something that we really would think should be expanded in our 10-year vision out. Visitor information is our next area, and we really want to make sure that we're taking care of that, what we call bed-to-recreation navigation, so that when somebody is getting up anywhere that they happen to be staying in North Lake Tahoe, they can easily find their way to the trail, to the beach, to the ski area, to whatever it is that they're choosing to do. So we have to look at it really holistically throughout the area, not only signage on the highways, which we're working on right now, it might be trail signage, it might be just signage on, you know, outside of the hotel rooms. It may be working with lodging properties and developing a clear navigation system that those hotel properties can give to that consumer. So, and then it's mobile technology, it's all of the other things that we're doing. We have to really get good at that if we're going to be able to satisfy the consumer desire for experiences. And then finally, our resource development. This is making sure that we can do all the things within our plan, whether it's transportation, convenient and resourceful transportation, whether it's building the capital investments that we need, or whether it's marketing the destination to the groups that we need to market to. Maintaining and developing the infrastructure in terms of maintaining the infrastructure, all of these things are going to take resources to be able to do. So it's not saying that we need to necessarily develop new resources, however, in some cases that may be the case, but it's also looking at how do we reprioritize certain things that we have, what's going to be the most important things for us to work on over the next 10 years, and so this will be something where we really believe we have to develop that capacity. So our next steps in getting this plan through to you for adoption are really to complete this initial design and draft with Design Workshop. We're meeting again in the next, at the end of this week, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks to get to that final draft. Then we want to work with Fresh Tracks Communication, and we'll be promoting and going out to all the various areas within North Lake Tahoe to really reach out to the community and say, "What do you think? Here are some of our recommendations. What are some of your recommendations, and what do you feel are the key priorities within what is on the list here?" And then we'll be working with Sandbox Design, who will be doing the actual layout and development of the master plan, once we have that input from the community, and then we'll be bringing it back to your board and our board for approval and adoption. We have set a goal for April of this year to have that before you. We're going to really be working hard over the next few months to make that a reality. Do you have any questions or anything that you would like to suggest to us that we include, or any feedback on what we've presented here today?
Great presentation. Thank you, Sandy. My feedback in terms of bringing this back to the board is I saw a lot of what are really great ideas up there, but what I didn't see is how much we think these are going to cost and where those dollars are going to come from. And I just compared to our infrastructure plan that we have at the county, where we say, "This is our vision for what we want to do. Here's how much we think it's going to cost. Here's how much we've already identified, and here's how much is left to be identified." And then we also prioritize them. So it would be really helpful if you could come back with that sort of a format for us, because it's going to be very difficult for us to say, "Yes, we endorse that," if we don't see the priorities and we don't understand the dollars that are associated with it, because I see more than TOT funding up there. So I'd be really interested in knowing what those additional funding sources would be and what your expectations would be for costs.
Great, great, great input, Jennifer, and that is something that we are doing. Some of the ideas are conceptual in nature and really don't have the ability to be hard-costed, but certainly some do. You know, when we say we'd like to really look at distribution points, for instance, or interpretive centers, we don't have anything specific in mind. We just think that that's something over the next 10 years that we need to be taking a look at. But in those cases where we do have some hard costs, we'll definitely be including that, and we are also including some alternative funding mechanisms that we may want to take a look at over the next 10 years as well.
Excellent. And then in terms of things like the high-altitude training center, which I love the idea, I think North Tahoe PUD brought that to me a number of years ago and said that they really wanted to see something in their regional park, just even a ballpark idea, is it going to be $1 million? Is it going to be $100 million? What are we envisioning? Because again, it's, I think it'd be difficult for us as a board to say, "Yeah, we're in," even conceptually, if we have no range of what those costs might be.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to stop.
Okay.
Okay, other board members have questions? Nope, I don't see any. Any members in the public? Need you to come up if you're going to address the board, if you come up and keep your microphone there.
Kathy Betts, I was just wondering, I can have a copy-
I'm sorry, your name for the record?
Kathy Betts.
Okay.
I was just wondering if there is a copy we can have of what was just presented.
Yeah, sure. You have mine.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to point out, there is a copy online, too, for anybody who wants to access it electronically.
All right. Seeing none, thank you very much for the report, for the update. That concludes all the items on our regular agenda. We do have some closed session items, and so, Carrie, if you'll go ahead and take us into closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss with legal counsel existing litigation, three items of litigation. Karen Bjork versus County of Placer, Tony Ed versus County of Placer, and a workers' compensation claim of Douglas Brock. The board will also discuss one anticipated litigation with one case of potential initiation of litigation, and two cases where there's significant exposure to litigation. Those cases involve letters of intent to file a sequer writ filed by the City of Auburn and Don Mooney on behalf of the Auburn 49 Corridor Association, challenging the board's approval of the option to ground lease in the Costco project.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session now, and then we'll come back and report out when we're done, and then I believe there is a tour opportunity available for board members that are interested. Thank you very much.
The board has adjourned from closed session. In Bjork versus County of Placer, the board authorized a retention of Frank Gumpert of Barquette and Gumpert to represent the Placer County Civil Service Commission in the federal and state court writ actions. In Tony Ed versus County of Placer, the board authorized the defense of the sheriff and the individual officers named and served in the complaint, and waived any potential conflict to allow the county council to represent all defendants. In Douglas Brock, a workers' compensation claim, they gave, the board gave direction to council. Under initiation of litigation, the board gave direction to council, and under the two items of significant exposure to litigation, the board heard a report and gave direction to council.
And we are adjourned until our special meeting of the board on Thursday, the 22nd, 9 o'clock.